Okay, all right. So it is 6:31, so we are going to get started. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. So the first thing is to review and approve the agenda. We're going to have a couple of changes to the order this evening. We are going to keep the Veteran Homelessness Proclamation and the Audit Report where they are, and then we're going to move the Combined Heat and Power Project contract, as well as the PFAS conversation, shifting both of those up to just after the Audit Report. So those will be just after Item 6, unless there are other objections or ideas. Okay. Yes?
Do we have -- oh, maybe it's already taken off. Okay.
You're good?
Oh, no. Item 7, the Solid Waste Management. Do we have an applicant at this stage?
There is actually, so it's worth having a discussion. Yeah, thank you. Great question. Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda? Okay, so we'll consider the agenda approved. So on to General Business and Appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the council -- I'm sorry, any member of the public to address the council on an item that is otherwise not on our agenda for the evening. So, and if you would say your name and where you're from and try to keep your comments to about two minutes.
I'll keep it down to two minutes for you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Zach Hughes. I'm over in Prospect Street Neighborhood. And I just want to rise tonight to discuss real quick. These last couple of snowstorms have caused quite a situation for me to, you know, get in and out of the city where I live. There was a couple nights I had to call for help because I could not transit the sidewalk. And I understand that there are things that are beyond cities' controls, such as ice, and you'd have to take blowtorches to it and all that. I get that. But there are chances that I have to take sometimes, and it's very risky. So I just want to rise and talk about that just briefly, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Elizabeth Parker, and I'm here for the Sustainable in Montpelier Coalition. And first of all, I wanted to recognize what you did at your last meeting with your vote recognizing the climate and the issues around it and that resolution, so thank you. Tomorrow night, we're having a film. It's called the Climate Action Film Festival. It is a wonderful film of nine shorts curated by Sun Common. It will be at the pavilion from 6:00 to 8:30, and we would love to have any of you come. And please pass the word, because I think it's going to be very exciting. This will be an effort to support the work of VPRG, VNRC, and also the Climate Youth Lobby. So do pass the word along. And according to Roger Hill, the storm will have cleared by then, so it will be good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to bring this up as public comments before everybody goes to sleep and leaves, and that is, there are going to be some changes to GMT's public transit routes, and it's really important people go online. There are some major changes to the two-route commuter, 100-route commuter, and to the links. So please go online. Public hearings will be posted.
Anyone else? Okay. So we're going to move on to the consent agendas, their motion regarding the consent agenda.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. All right. And so on to the Veteran Homelessness Proclamation. So I want to invite Stephen Luna up to the table up here and just tell you a little bit about this briefly. So I was introduced to this, to the Mayor's Challenge to End Veteran Homelessness, gosh, some months ago now. And in part because of the form of government that we have, you know, we don't have a strong mayor form of government. It seemed appropriate to me to bring this Mayor's Challenge to the council. This is what Winuski did as well, and so it seemed like an appropriate step. And really, it's about ending veteran homelessness, especially with our discussion about homelessness recently and the efforts that, you know, we're putting forward to address that topic generally. It felt appropriate to bring this up. So I'd love to turn it over to you, Stephen, to talk about, give us a little more detail.
Sure. Is this on?
Yes.
Oh, very good. Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Luna, and I work for Supportive Services for Veteran Families at the University of Vermont. That's my paid job. The other job that I have is as Chair of the Vermont Veterans Committee on Homelessness. We've been around since 2015 and made up of mostly all of the veteran service organizations throughout the state. And we're charged with coming up with a program, systems, put systems in place that will bring about an end to veterans homelessness. We're doing a pretty good job. We've seen numbers go down over the last year or so. And just recently, I was introduced to the Mayor's Challenge. About a year ago, I was first informed about the Mayor's Challenge. It's a program that's been around for a number of years. I think George W. Bush started the program. Then Michelle Obama was a big champion of the Mayor's Challenge. And then it went dormant for a little bit, and it's kind of coming back with a vengeance lately. And it really is an effort by all of the organizations that work with, work within the homeless arena to come together and create a system, create a buzz, if you will, about ways that we can meet the needs of the homeless community. Beyond just veterans, the Mayor's Challenge also works towards ending homelessness for all of the other homeless folks out there. So I'm here representing the veterans, but there are a number of other really deserving groups out there that we should look at as well. So the Mayor's Challenge, here in Vermont, we have eight mayors. And as of tonight, hopefully, we'll have six of those eight mayors onboard with Mayor's Challenge. So we really look forward to Montpelier coming on to the group as well. Any questions?
Connor, then Donna.
No, and you might not have this, Steve. Out of Vermont's homeless population, what percentage of them are veterans?
Ooh, yeah, I don't have--
Might be a hard number to even come up with.
Right. I can tell you, I can tell you the number of veterans that are homeless, that we currently have record of, and that's, we are right now at 59 homeless veterans in the state of Vermont, which is down considerably from even this time last year, we had about 87. So we're down to 59 at this point.
Five percent?
Sure. Five percent.
Sure.
I'd have to pull my calculator out, but--
Donna.
So I like the proclamation. But what can we do? Are there steps you're going to lay out to what we can do beyond this proclamation? How do we put it into any kind of action?
So the proclamation is a good first step. As we, as we head down this path, like I was telling Mayor Watson, one of the things we're doing in Chittenden County is we're going to ask the mayors in Chittenden County to do a joint press conference. And we're going to call it a call to action. We're really, really close. We have single numbers in Chittenden County of homeless veterans, so we're really close, and we need the mayors to get out there and get the word out to the community that we need some housing for just a few veterans. And so when we get to that point, right now, in Washington County, there are 23 veterans that are homeless. And the reason there's such a large number of homeless veterans here in Washington County is because of The Vet's Place in Northfield, which is transitional housing. And unfortunately, at least from my perspective, unfortunately HUD considers those, anybody, whether veteran or not, that are in transitional housing to be considered homeless, which seems crazy to me, but I don't write the rules. So as we, as we move forward and we, and we start this process, really start to dig into finishing it, being able to submit an application to USICH to claim we've ended veterans homelessness, we'll probably be coming back to ask Montpelier for that call to, call to action.
So where do they end up finding homes?
Wherever they can.
But you're making the matches? You're supporting them or connecting them to agencies?
Yes. Beyond that, we have, we have case managers that will work with them through the whole process and then stay with them after the fact. So it really depends on which program they're in. If they're, if they're receiving a HUD-VASH voucher, which is similar to Section 8, they will receive case management for as long as they need it. If they're in our program, SSVF, which is rapid rehousing, they'll receive case management after being housed up to six months.
I guess behind my question is, is it, for most of the cases, a matter of money and income or a matter of available housing period?
The reasons are as varied as they, as the veterans themselves. Some of them just need some extra money to, you know, pay off some back rent or pay off a bill that didn't get paid so they aren't evicted. Some need that down payment or the first month's rent and the, and the security deposit to get into a place. Some need a lot more than that to include, you know, more specialized help.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Is there, thank you. And is there, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation to end veteran homelessness.
All seconded? Great. All right, further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Thank you, and thank you for your time and coming, coming to speak to us.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all for passing the proclamation. We'll be in touch soon.
Sounds good. Okay, and so now we have an audit report. And if you're here for that, come on up. Evening. Welcome.
I'm Ron Smith. Miranda McDonald. Ms. Kelly Murphy. Heather, you want to give a little introduction before I go?
Would you mind moving that microphone over there as you--
Thank you. Is this good?
Well, I don't, I don't know yet, actually.
Can you hear me okay?
No.
No? Okay. Let's see. Testing? Perfect. Okay. So we are here to talk about the audit, and I wanted to provide a brief introduction before getting into the details. And you've sort of heard generally who we are, but being a new group on the scene here, I just wanted to provide that introduction formally. Kelly Murphy, Finance Director.
Heather Graves, Senior Staff Accountant.
Ron Smith, Principal, RHR Smith &amp; Company.
Miranda McDonald, Audit Manager.
So now that you know who we all are, I just wanted to note that RHR Smith &amp; Company was engaged in May of 2019 to do the FY '19 audit. And the purpose of this audit is to express opinions on financial statements, governmental activities, business activities, ensure state and federal compliance, and meet generally accepted accounting standards, and then also provide the single audit for anything over To that end, the news tonight is good. We have received a clean opinion, an unmodified, unqualified opinion over last year, which basically means, in a nutshell, that the city's statements are presented fairly and appropriately and are in compliance with general standards. And so on your desk in front of you, you have the audit, but then you also have the presentation materials submitted. And I apologize if my back's to any of you. You've got the presentation materials, which includes a balance sheet, statement of revenues, budget to actual, and GF revenue by source and area of expenditure. I also did want to note that if you do want to go into executive session for any reason, I'm just reminding you that you have the option if you should so choose to discuss items within the audit that you wouldn't necessarily want staff present for. So with that, I will have them take it away.
I have a loud voice. Is this too loud?
Nope.
So I'm Ron Smith, and I'm the Principal with RHR Smith &amp; Company, and this is the first year, as Kelly said, that we have the pleasures of doing business with Montpelier. We audit in the states of Maine, Vermont, Massachusetts, and New Hampshire, probably over 400 governments, so we know a lot about who you are and certainly what you do. I hail from the great state of Vermont. I was born and raised in St. Johnsberry, Vermont. Miranda was born and raised in southern Vermont, Texas, you know, so we certainly know a lot, you know, about Vermont. And certainly, I don't want to go through a 100-page document with you all, so I'm just going to hit the highlights, you know, of that and just tell us some of our observations and best practices that we saw for Montpelier and answer any questions that you guys may have, you know, of us and the process. So as Kelly stated, we gave you an unmodified opinion for your financial statements. There's actually two audits that we do. As she stated, there's the financial statement audit and the federal compliance piece to that audit. We found no issues, you know, with findings or questioned costs with the federal compliance piece, meaning you're spending the U.S. federal government's money the way you're supposed to be. And then we found nothing worthy, you know, of fraud, defalcation, or any reason to modify our audit opinion. So as she stated, well, you got the highest opinion, an unmodified opinion for June 30, 2019. And to hit the highlights, based on a budget with capital transfers and your general fund operating budget, which is about $14 million annually, or was on June 30, 2019, we like to see you all at about 30, 60 to 90 days of your operating budget. So what's that mean, you know, in Montpelier terms? 1.1, 2.2, 3.3 million dollars is the range. You're at about 1.5, which is uncommitted and not tied down to anything, which is a slight increase of a little over $200,000 from last year. So I'd say that that's great news, you know, for the city of Montpelier. You're at about 45 days of your operating budget. I think that the goal to shoot for and to be consistent with your policy is to, you want to get it about 60 days. That's the benchmark we like to see all of our governments at, you know, and that is this, as I can attest, you know, to Montpelier and laying in my bedroom at 11:30, listening to trucks going off and doing construction projects outside the window. This is a busy town, and you have put a lot of money into infrastructure for sure, and we see no reason why that's probably going to stop in the, you know, in the near future. So it can be expensive when that phone rings, for sure. And one of the things that we want to talk about, you know, being the outsiders looking in and working with Kelly and Heather, you know, is just talking about all this infrastructure, you know, how we're going to maintain it, how we're going to pay for it, the capital plan, and any adjustments, you know, that you, that you may need to make here to your existing, you know, plans and policies that you have. So I would suspect over the next few months, you know, as we get together and engage in these dialogues, that there's probably going to be some, you know, understanding brought to this council, certainly for recommendations on that, you know, as we move forward. Because like I said, it's a, it's a busy town. You've got a lot of, a lot going on. And I would say that that's probably one of our biggest talking points, is what you have going on and the cost of it, but more importantly, the future maintenance of those types of things, you know, and your capital plan. So I think that that's a big thing you need to look at and consider. Your enterprise funds are busy. You have a lot of them, water, sewer. You have your heat district. You have your, I'm missing, parking fund. So I think that all of them are financially, you know, within, you know, within the constraints of where you, where your expectations would be. But I think that the one thing that stands out with all your enterprise funds is the amount of money that you've put into your infrastructure, water and sewer, you know, specifically. So, so again, I think that that's going to be a big focal point that we'll make over, you know, this next audit and just making sure, you know, that, you know, that we have a plan, you know, and in place, and based upon what our old plan was, that the plan now will be modified and acceptable to, to just meet the needs and meet the growth of Montpelier is probably the best way that I can say that. So there were a couple of best practice comments that we had. Procurement was one of them, you know, for sure, just some, some suggestions that we made regarding procurement and looking at your federal funds. Bank reconciliations, we, we saw some delays in bank reconciliations this year at the city, and certainly that's an area. Cash is king. You know, that's the area that you certainly want to pay your attention to, and, you know, we saw no issues of any, you know, mismanagement. I think it was just time. I think that, you know, to, as, as your outsiders coming in and being the new outsiders coming in, there's a lot of new faces and new chairs, you know, specifically now, you know, and even on the way out the door during the process, you know, there was some transition in personnel too within your finance department. I think your people did a great job, you know, in getting through that exercise, but it was definitely a year of transition and, you know, and given that, you know, and I think getting other people to sit in chairs and look at things like the way that you have your organization, there was really no repository, you know, to go to to get information. It was all over the place. And I think with some suggestions with your staff, there was some, you know, some conversation about that and just, just maybe a better, easier way to facilitate that going forward, you know, whether or not you, you know, you have a debt, you know, a debt repository, whether or not you have a TIF repository, you know, and things that would pertain to that would reside in that, you know. So there was a lot of conversation regarding best practice. But again, I think given the transition and a lot of the new faces that you have in your finance department, I think kudos to them, you know. They certainly responded and allow us to sit here in front of you and saying that the ship's pointed in the right direction, and we look forward to being part of that journey and look forward to giving you guys advice going forward, for sure.
Thank you. Any questions? Donna? Oh, and then Dan.
One about your questions. The bank reconciliation and the purchasing, what you found, was that different than it happened in other years?
So speaking on other years, I would say the bank reconciliations were the new one, as I recall, based on a previous, any previous year management comments? Yeah, there were some, there are some new ones, and I don't know what the, what level of depth of conversations that got had, you know, between your former finance director and your former auditors, you know, but those are, those are just some of our comments and observations that we, that we made for this year.
So with the bank reconciliation, it's sort of to indicate too much busyness and not doing that. With the purchasing, you're saying the system wasn't in place, so, and that needs to be established.
Yeah, so I, I think that there's some better, there's a lot of ways to say that you did things correctly. And I think that, you know, some of yours, or not correctly. I'm still trying to find the balance, but in the middle of there. But whatever that way is, you know, I think it's probably fair to say, there can be improvement, you know, here in Montpelier. But going back to the bank reconciliations, as we understood it coming in with your entrance conference and kind of through the whole duration of the process, is that there was, there was just other time-sensitive things, and then with some of the transition that went place, there, it was explainable to us, you know, to see. And as we have shared with Kelly and if we share with Heather, those are the things that we know that there'll be improvement on because of the new, new places, new bodies, and, and the time constraints are different this audit than they were last audit, for sure, so.
Dan?
I had two questions. First one was about the idea of a maintenance fund that you're, or maintenance funds. Is this something that you don't see now that will have to be developed, or is it because, and is it because these projects are emerging?
Yeah, so a couple of things. We actually see the intent. We see a capital projects fund. We see capital projects in there. You know, we see a lot of infrastructure, you know, projects going on here at the town. And we see that you've got existing policies, procedures, and we see that you've got some inf, some, for lack of a better way to say it, a current blueprint. And what we're saying is, is with all the infrastructure going on in the town, you know, just like you probably did when you said, "It was time." You know, "We were growing here in Montpelier. There were things that we need to do. Maybe some of that was deferred maintenance, so guess what? Let's do it." We're saying now, "Stop. You've done, you've done a lot." You know, and I think too, as you continue to do a lot, look at your blueprint right now, make adjustments where necessary. And that's one of the things that we want to work with your finance team, you know, on, because I think that that's time, for sure. So, yeah. And, and in my outside professional opinion, I don't think that there is enough money, you know, that you have sitting in for, for replacement or maintenance reserve, whatever it is to take care of and establish this infrastructure that you're spending so much money on and will continue, you know, to spend money on. That's where I think the blueprint's going to need some adjustments.
Okay. And then increasing funds and--
Correct. Correct.
The second question I had was about the enterprise funds. You seem to indicate that we have a lot. Was that necessarily criticism that we should be looking?
No. So when I meant by a lot, is, is, all the enterprise funds that I can think of professionally, you have them all. So that's a lot. You know, so, so, so let me say that.
Mine is an airport.
Yeah, mine, you don't have an airport, but I'm not sure I'd call that an enterprise. I don't see many airports making money in this day and age. But here's what I'm sure of. You have a lot of them, and I'd argue you check all the boxes, as we would say in our standards, you know, but also, you can see the emphasis with those enterprise funds and the infrastructure needs that you're putting in there. I mean, you can see your balance sheet growing by millions of dollars, you know, every year because of all the infrastructure upgrades that you guys are doing, you know, and, and that's what I say, you have a lot, and you're spending a lot in those areas. And I really think that that's probably one of the, you know, areas besides TIF and, you know, some other things that you have going on here. That's where I really probably would focus some attention on going forward, for sure. So.
Thanks.
Jack?
One question that occurred to me, and it's not critical of anyone, but the fiscal year ended June 30th. Now we here are at the end of February. Is that, is that timing an issue? Is that a normal amount of time?
No, we like, we like to, so, so that was actually talked about during the entrance, and I think what wasn't allowed, you know, really at the end of the day is your departure of your finance director, your departure of your longstanding controller, you know, and I know the audit got pushed back a couple of months, you know, to get in here, and this is not criticism on anybody. You know, I, I think the fact that we're sitting here, and actually, we're sitting having conversations back in November and December with your management to make sure that you guys had no surprises, that I think is the testament to the process. If we were sitting here now saying, "Well, we, we changed our conversation that we had back in November and December with your management," that would be, I think, a concern that I would have in that chair. That didn't happen, you know. But normally, we like to turn the process, and I think the goal was December 31st, was to have the process complete. But statutory deadlines, you've met them all. This March 31st is the big one to submit your federal compliance audit, so there'd been no delay, you know, certainly in that, so.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was thinking that it might be useful to have the audit complete while we're developing the budget for the next fiscal year.
So one of the things that Kelly and I had talked about before we actually walked into the chambers is, it's nice to know and do some prognostication as early as possible. We like to come in through our pre-audit process as you're, you know, developed, voted on your budget, you know, just to, just to make sure, you know, that that train's still on that track, you know, based upon, you know, the fact that there's still three to four months left in your fiscal year, you know, the fact that a lot of things can happen, you know, for sure, and, and again, just the busyness of the city, so.
Thanks.
Other questions?
So I have a couple of questions. Well, but first of all, it's just wonderful to, to know that we're on track, that we're going in the right direction, that, that to have an unmodified opinion on audits, great. And also, you know, having the benchmarks of, you know, that the goal is to have 60 days worth of operating budget, that's, that's, you know, useful, or like a way to think about it, knowing that we have 45 days, which is up from last year. That's, that's great. You know, thinking about, kind of coming back to the question that Dan had about the infrastructure. So knowing that, thinking about the funding for our infrastructure might be a focal point for next year, it's, it's just very interesting. I just want to make a note that we are, with this budget that we just approved, that'll be voted on Town Meeting Day, so it's the FY '21 budget, is, marks the end of a long process that we, we went through as a council to try to increase the amount of funding that we put into our infrastructure to be maintaining the infrastructure that we had at an appropriate level. So you know what, like how much, how much money would be needed to keep, you know, pavement conditions at a, at a certain functional level over time with proper maintenance and whatnot? And so anyway, it's just very interesting to hear you say that perhaps, that the, that the amount of money that would be needed to maintain the infrastructure is not, is perhaps not enough. And it's, so I'm curious if that thought comes from comparing Montpelier with other municipalities that you might have worked with in terms of like the amount of money that, well, I guess I'll just leave it there as a question. What, how, like, how did you come to that conclusion? Like, what are the, what are the ingredients that, that go into that? Or, and like, how can we be thinking about infrastructure differently?
So yes, I want to go back to your question. It is comparing you to other municipalities. And, and I would add just to that element, 30 years of being me, you know, and dealing with this industry and just going through the, the peaks and valleys of the industry and, and seeing this change, you know, now and just-- and, and seeing this change, you know, now and just seeing, you know, really the direction that government's moving in, you know. And I think it moves in a different direction every year, quite frankly. So, so, yes, you know, with as far as the industry and just my knowledge of it, you know, and, and just my observations, you know, and some of the conversations, you know, that we had with your management. You know, there's been some deferred maintenance clearly here in Montpelier. And I'd say, "You're, you're going to pay for that now? You're going to pay for that in the future." And winters aren't getting any easier, you know. And, you know, and I would argue, you know, that the snow coming from Vermont, you know, the, the snow may hit the roads. I'm not sure. The snow's causing the problem. I think it's the salt, the calcium, and everything else that's going on the roads, you know, and the potholes that you get and everything. Roads is just probably the biggest infrastructure need, you know, that we see. And being the capital of this great state and seeing the amount of cars, you know, that are probably coming down Route 2 to go to Burlington or come back home, that puts wear and tear and stress certainly on your infrastructure as well, you know. So, all those, you know, considering, I think that there's just a multitude of things, you know, that really force you every year to look at your blueprint.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great. Well, thank you, and thank you all for all your, for your work in this. It's really encouraging to have a clean audit. So, thank you again.
It's been a pleasure.
Yeah. Okay. And so now we are jumping to what was scheduled to be item 10, the combined heat and power project contract. And I know there are some folks here for that and left to invite, do you, do you need a minute?
No.
You're good? Okay.
So, on your council agenda?
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kurt Monica, City Engineer, Public Works Department. This is Chris Cox, Chief Operator of the Water Resource Recovery Facility. And we're here to talk about the agreement for the Phase 2 project at the Water Resource Recovery Facility for combined heat and power. We sent a draft agreement around in your council packets, just some of the highlights of some of the items we talked about at the last meeting. We are moving forward. We propose to move forward with a single 400 watt kilowatt generator. According to our consultant, that really is the most economical option at this point. Moving to two generators would be a cash negative option. But we have set the contract up to allow for a second generator to be installed in the future. So, the, the gas conditioning equipment will be sized in a way that it can treat all the methane that's produced from the plant, which is the big cost of, you know, of an adder project to put a second generator in. But at this point, we think that the single generator is the best option. The, I also wanted to point out to council that there is a risk moving forward with this PDA, a financial risk. We have to essentially put forth approximately $220,000 to apply for the standard offer program and to do the upfront permitting in order to make this project eligible for the, the high, relatively high 20, 20.8 cent per kilowatt rate. So, there is a risk. So, if you do approve this, and there's no absolute guarantee that we will get awarded that, based on conversations with VEPi, we think there is a very good chance that we would get the award. But, but I just wanted to make sure that council is aware of that. ESG did offer to, the total permit fees are $40,000 approximately, and that includes an air quality permit and the interconnection agreement with Green Mountain Power. And ESG has agreed to take half of that risk, $20,000. Energy Systems Group is ESG, the contractor we're working with. So, instead of a $240,000 risk, it's a $220,000 risk, because the, the agreement itself, the work for ESG to develop the engineering needed to do this project is cost $200,000. So, that is really the highlights of what's changed. We are still doing final negotiations on this agreement. There may be some minor changes between the two lawyers, our attorneys. But I think this is very close. I don't, I don't believe there'll be any substantial changes to the document.
Jack?
Kurt, has, has there been any change in your estimate of the likelihood of, of being able to get the standard offer contract since the last time we talked?
No, I have a call into VEPi. I was not able to speak with them yet. It is something I want to chat with them about before we have Bill sign this, assuming council authorizes it. I don't have any change since last time. I still believe it is a very high likelihood of award, but I do want to follow up with the VEPi program. Still on my list of things to do.
Great. Thanks.
Lauren?
Just on that point, so if we did not get it, how would things play out from there? I mean, it sounds very encouraging and hopeful and optimistic, but what would be the kind of Plan B or what?
Right. So, we'd have the engineering work done. The city would, you know, own basically the engineering that today. So, we'd be able to use that to apply with ESG the next year in the standard offer program. So, we would go back again. Would be a year delay.
A year.
Correct. Yep.
Connor?
Which attorneys are we working with on our end on this? They always have the question, you know?
Joe McLean with Sitzel, Page &amp; Fletcher.
Okay.
I have a whole bunch of questions. To be fair, I don't necessarily, I meant to send them to you earlier, and I just didn't get to doing that. But, so I may send you some questions later on that are not necessarily like things we have to go into right now. Like, let's remove as many acronyms as we can. You know, for example, like PLC, that as an educator, that means something totally different than I'm sure what it means to you. You know, things like that. But there are a couple of questions that I have that I think, that I, that I want to bring up at this point. One is that, I just want to note that the, I mean, this is, this is clearly a PDA that ESG is used to working with, that they've come up with, and it has a lot of protections for them. I just want to make sure that we have some protections for us. And those, in my mind, include just some specifications about warranties. So, I know it, it does discuss warranties a little bit in this, but supposing anything, you know, fail, like, are the, like, what if a warranty is only like one year long, and, you know, we're depending on, on that, that piece? And then is, you know, I, I would just love to have some kind of assurance that if the warranties are shorter than the term of the contract with ESG, that they would end up covering something like that. So, just want to make a note about that. Second thing is, I think it's a little confusing that they're guaranteeing 50% of the feedstock by volume. And specifically, I, I just think that that term by volume could be clearer, which is to say, is it, is it by volume of what is considered the capacity of the digester or of the plant? Or is it 50% of what is taken in, in general, of like, just whatever comes to the plant? And so, presumably, the city or, you know, the, you know, the, our, just our staff will be responsible for finding the other 50%. Is that, is that correct?
Well, actually, that-
Or, or is it operating at 50%? Yeah.
This particular item is something that ESG has actually asked to remove from this agreement, the 50% feedstock volume. So, the reason is, in order to qualify for the VEPi program, you have to have a 50%, like food waste going to the digesters. So, that actually will go into this, there'll be a second contract, assuming we get the award and the interconnection agreement. There'll be an actual construction contract with ESG, a design-build contract, that will include that 50% feedstock volume, as well as the warranty items that you mentioned. So, this is really just kind of the precursor till we get the project, and then there'll be a much length, more lengthy agreement that will cover those things.
Okay. That's good to know, because the, the food residuals part was also confusing to me, knowing that, I feel like we had talked about other types of, you know, fluid, you know, feedstock that was, that would not necessarily have been food. So, that makes, is that, is that in line for where we're still at? It might not, it's just organic material. It's not necessarily food stock, food residuals?
Right. And there's a classification through VEPi that kind of defines what's eligible under their program for that standard offer program.
Okay. And I just have a couple of questions about confidentiality. I just want to make sure that we get to keep the records that, that we, that we need, you know, if we have data, that like that, the fact that it said, you know, that they would be collecting back all of the, well, well, some of the information that would be considered confidential. I just want to make sure that we have the, our own records to, to be able to track things well for ourselves. I mean, I understand that there's probably some, you know, things that do need to be confidential, but just, just flagging that. And then, I just wanted to note that in, in this development agreement, there was a section, oh, gosh, it is for, section 4 C and D. I just wanted to note that that, I, I mean, I can talk to you about C and D offline. It was, I just found it a little confusing. So, I'll ask you about that later.
Okay, sure.
Okay. I guess that is it for me.
I had a couple of questions. You know, in Exhibit A, I mean, at least the form I got, it, it didn't have the engineering drawings and designs and the warranties. And you indicated that that's going to come with effectively the next phase. Is it your understanding, then, that if there's an issue at that phase where we can't come to an agreement, or you can't come to agreement with, with ESG, that we'd have no further, we'd be able to end, end the agreement and end any obligations for further payments?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, essentially, this is sort of an umbrella agreement, setting out the framework that eventually will be fleshed out by these additional documents and these additional agreements as we go along. And then I had a question on the, and just, that was somewhat a rhetorical statement, but it actually was a question, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
Right. This document is just enough work to apply for the standard offer program and to do the engineering work needed for the interconnection agreement with Green Mountain Power, which is required for the application. But it does not include the full design for the generator and all the electrical on the facility, at the facility itself.
But it anticipates those?
It anticipates that, assuming we get the, this award. Yeah.
Okay. And, and so, ESG wants to remove the 50% food volume residual?
Right. From this, from this phase of the contract, they feel it's more appropriate to have in the second, the actual construction contract, the design-build.
Okay. But I mean, isn't that something that we would have to essentially prove or represent to VEPi?
For the application.
For the application?
Right. They feel comfortable that they can meet that. They just don't feel that this is the appropriate location to put that requirement in.
So, they want to put it in the latter document as a way, when they actually get around to the design of that?
Right. Just as part of, it's part of the guarantee process. So, the actual construction contract will include all the guarantees, all the warranties. And that's really part of this, the meeting that food stock requirement is really a function of that, of a guarantee in the contract.
Okay. And, and you, you said this is the product so far of some negotiations with Joe and, and the attorney for ESG?
Correct.
Okay. So, I was looking at the confidentiality and the public records component. So, my understanding is that the, there will be some documents that will be considered trade secrets and will be held confidential. And so, it's my understanding that these would be designated by ESG as confidential trade secrets. But it looks as if that, that would expire after one year, following, after the agreement expired, or the lifetime of that? Is that?
They essentially have like a, a one-year non-compete clause, where we wouldn't go with another firm to develop a, you know, a power sale agreement for one year. I believe the confidential, confidentiality piece is, has to do more with their contract language.
Okay. So, so rather than the technical specs, specifications, it's more of their bidding and pricing?
Correct.
Okay. That's, I think that's all I had on my notes. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? And this will be reviewed by our lawyer before we sign it.
Correct. Yeah. I'm just asking for you to authorize, authorize this bill as the designated representative for the city to sign upon final review and approval by the city attorney.
Is there a motion? Jack?
I move that we authorize the city manager to execute the project development agreement with ESG for Phase 2 of the Water Resource Recovery Facility, subject to final review and acceptance by the state, city attorney.
Second.
Okay. So, motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yes.
All right. And we are going to go right into item, what is listed as item 11, discussion of PFAS at the Water Resource Recovery Facility.
Okay.
Sorry? Question?
We have a state representative here, too.
Right. So, yeah, a few folks from DC have come to speak on this topic as well. So, invite them up to join us.
Awesome. Welcome.
To get more seats.
Yeah.
I'm Kurt Monica, City Engineer, Public Works.
Casey Caffin with Waste Management and Solid Waste Program.
Hi, I'm Chuck Schwer. I'm the Director of our Waste Management Prevention Division. I've also been fairly active in this whole PFAS issue since 2006. So, we decided to bring all our experts to make sure you got all your questions answered. So, sorry, we're overwhelming you with people, but we want to make sure we help you out.
I'm Amy Palacek. I'm the Wastewater Program Manager.
Chris Cox, Chief Operator.
I'm Nick Giannetti. I work in the pretreatment section of the wastewater program.
Hi, my name's Aiman Tuig, and I work in the residuals management and emerging contaminants program.
All right. So, this discussion was instigated by an article recently in Vermont Digger that discussed PFAS at the wastewater treatment facility. And Chris and I put together a memo sort of outlining what PFAS is. It's really an emerging contaminant. I think the state could attest to, we're still doing a lot of sampling and trying to get a handle on where things are with it. There is no discharge limit in Vermont for surface water. So, really, what our intention here was to provide an opportunity to answer questions. We've got a whole lot of expertise here with the state of Vermont, which we really appreciate them coming tonight. But, you know, basically, the limits from the plant are parts per trillion. So, those are the, the levels from, the drinking water standard is 20 parts per trillion. Our plant, I think, based on the most recent sampling from the state, was around an average of 70 parts per trillion. The EPA standard for drinking water is, is at 70. So, we're right around the actual drinking water standard for, as established by EPA, but Vermont has a, a lower one. So, I think we really covered most of the information in the memo. So, I really just, I was thinking of opening it up to questions from council on this.
Kurt, real quick, just for the folks who are watching at home, just so we can level the playing field a little bit, for those who didn't read the memo- the playing field a little bit. For those who didn't read the memo, can you explain a little bit about what we're talking about, just other than it being a emerging contaminant?
Right.
Thank you.
So, PFAS is a, many different contaminants, and maybe I should turn this over to the state, because they have more expertise than I do. What do you want to speak to this?
I can give just an overview, if that's good, and then I'll ask you guys to jump in.
So again, when we discovered the problem in Bennington, it was the ChemFAB facility. It's a compound that's used to act as a surfactant for Teflon coating, and it was first discovered as an issue in Bennington, 350 odd wells contaminated. Subsequent to that, the question was raised by the legislature, by the public, by cities, you know, where else is this stuff? And where should we be concerned about? So we began a two to three year, it's actually almost four years now, sampling program. And most recently, we submitted a number of reports that kind of culminated all this work. Some was asked for by the legislature, some was directed, or some was chosen to be done by us to see if we could learn more about this contaminant. So from that report, we found that landfill leachate is a considerable source of PFAS in the environment. We also did a study, which Casey can definitely answer much better than I, but materials deposited in the landfill turned out to be the source. A lot of residential, like carpets, furniture, textiles, other clothing-type products. So we're all contributing to the source of PFAS that ends up in the final resting area, the landfill, and then the leachate, it accumulates. So, in the testing, we did eight different rounds of testing of both the leachate and the wastewater treatment facilities that accept it. And the levels reported are accurate, coming out, the effluent is about 70 parts per trillion. In developing this program, we did initial calculations of what would be an impact on streams, and our guideline levels were much higher than what Mount Pelear's accepting in leachate. So that was the good news. But what we don't know, and Amy and Nick can talk more about that, is, okay, we know from just testing in the stream that we're not detecting it, but is it a problem for long-term loading of these compounds? Are they accumulating in fish? Is there issues with aquatic biota? We don't know that. And that's something that the state, and we hope EPA, will help us figure out over the next few years. But really, the good news is the leachate that Mount Pelear's accepting is well below those initial guideline levels that we came up with. Again, we're not saying that's the end of the story. There's certainly a lot more we need to learn, but at least initially, we're not thinking it's, you know, an acute problem, a huge problem, at this point. I don't know if any of you guys want to add to that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Questions, Connor, then Donna, and then Dan, and then Lauren.
Just like, looking at some of the adverse human health impacts of this, and it'll, DC will be working with the EPA to see if anything happens to fish or wildlife, right? Do you contract with an epidemiologist to see if there's any instances of sort of the things listed in this memo, that are kind of out of whack with just the general population in these areas?
Well, to come up with our standards. So to come up with the water quality standards, we work with state toxicologists, and we have water quality chemists, you know, in the DEC. So, we have, we work with people that are, you know, qualified to assess, you know, toxicity in humans, in aquatic biota, and in fish, and in surface waters.
There, nationally, there are considerable data gaps, though, and so that's something that holds back both Vermont and the EPA from being able to make faster progress on standards.
Since it takes a long time to make things evident enough, or sick enough, to then say, oh, this is a real problem, what's our prevention mode, assuming it is going to be a problem?
That's a great question. So, well, right now, like, we have a standard for drinking water and groundwater, which is 20 parts per trillion, so we, for five of the 4,000 PFAS compounds. So, we know what safe levels of drinking water are, but for, for surface waters and for fish consumption, like, we've been saying, we need to collect more data and do more research on that. I think one of the things that we advocate for, since there needs to be more research done, is source reduction. So going upstream, going to where these compounds are coming from, and reducing them at the source, because we, what we've seen, working with New Hampshire, the Mass DEP, the EPA, is that that's the cheapest way and most effective way to reduce these contaminants. So, that's, that's what we would recommend when, you know, in lack of a standard.
Okay, so going back to the source, when you talked earlier, he mentioned furniture, carpets, clothing, so that mean we have to have higher standards of manufacturing?
Yeah, I mean, the things coming into the landfill is a difficult issue to pin down. I can speak to doing source reduction of sources of wastewater, so folks, or, you know, I can, I can speak to how to reduce PFAS concentrations in wastewater, right? And so we look at industries that are using these products, and these products are getting, you know, flushed down the drain with their processed wastewater. And, you know, we would look at alternatives of products that they can use to reduce these concentrations. We would look at alternative practices that they could be doing to reduce these concentrations. But as far as reducing the amount of PFAS going to the landfill, Casey, do you want to speak on that a little bit?
So, for the sources going into the landfill?
You can speak in the mic, I'm just.
I am addressing you. For the sources going into the landfill, we looked at sources that were probable to have PFAS to start with. And so it was sledges, as was mentioned, textiles, soils that were contaminated for other reasons. We tried to do a broad sweep of material types that are going to the landfill, but are also in use around. And as Chuck mentioned, the highest amount of PFAS that ends up in the landfill, so on a mass basis, our estimate is that it's coming from bulky furniture, couches, carpets, other textile sources, like clothing. Umbrellas were really, really high. We looked at a very broad range of materials. And so, in terms of trying to reduce what's the amount of PFAS that's going into the landfill, addressing those sources that are industrial in nature, or sledges, things of that type, certainly would help, but it's not going to cut off the beast. And so that needs to be done at a broader level, and a broader level than Vermont, even. And, you know, I think, even if that were to happen, and we were to get rid of PFAS out of all materials, we're still going to have to deal with this, because we're going to have that residual legacy product at our landfills and at our wastewater facilities. And that's why we're doing this sampling, is to try and get a sense of what that looks like.
Sorry, this is maybe PFAS for dummies, for me. So, if I understand correctly, the PFAS is coming from the source materials that then gets trucked as part of the sledge or wastewater, leachate material that is treated by the treatment plant. And there's nothing the wastewater treatment plant can do to remove that. It's just in the water, it's going to go through the system and come out on the other side. So there's no part of solution that necessarily, you know, and I'll use a really simple idea of like, a filter, that's going to change that.
Well, the standard wastewater treatment, biological treatment that is usually used by wastewater treatment plants does not remove these type of chemicals. However, there are treatment processes that can remove them, granular activated carbon, reverse osmosis, but they're very expensive. And so, that's the issue with these type of chemicals. Also, once you have your granular activated carbon that's been spent, the issue is where do you take that?
Right.
Because now it's full of PFAS.
Okay, so, just, and under, so, and part of it is that, you know, we have, so there is a way of possibly filtering, but it's expensive, and it's, it sounds like it has to be a state and sort of federal answer. And the other part is that we don't even know what this necessarily does downriver, or how, how much it accumulates. I mean, is there any sense about whether it accumulates in like, the sediment, or the, the river bottom itself, as opposed to the aquatic biota and fish populations?
So I'm going to, I'm going to tackle that kind of in two parts.
Please do.
I'm going to back up to the treatment discussion just a little bit. So, treatment of PFAS is definitely possible. On the landfill side, because the source of PFAS going into your wastewater facility, the landfill certainly is contributing quite high concentrations. There's, there's no denying that. We are exploring treatment options with the landfill. We did have them prepare a report looking at how they could treat their leachate, and that is the same treatment process that could be used on any liquid. So if you're interested in looking at that more, we're working through that process with the landfill. The, the problem is not only the costs, but there's still some pretty big unknowns associated with treatment of PFAS. So, we, we have the, the granulated activated carbon, or, or something that holds onto the PFAS. It's captured it, we've got to do something with it. And on, on a broad scale, that stabilization or destruction of PFAS is complicated and unknown at this time. So, you know, it's not even just a matter of the cost, it's a matter of making sure that we take the time to explore our best options, and whether that's at the, treating the leachate, or working with the wastewater facilities.
Right, or a Yucca Mountain for carbon, for PFAS, yeah.
And then, and then for the, what happens to it in the aquatic environment, that's exactly the questions that still need to be addressed. It is, they are highly soluble compounds, but it is going to partition and separate out into different parts of the environment.
Okay, thanks.
I have a number of questions. I know, you're shocked. So, I mean, first of all, I just, I do want to acknowledge that DEC and the state has been like, a national leader on PFAS response. And when the Bennington PFOWA contamination was discovered in the drinking water, Vermont stepped up, responded, was, you know, doing a press conference within like, 30 minutes of it being found, whereas other states hit it for like, years from, you know, their equivalent DECs knew about it. So, like, big kudos to the state and DEC in particular, who's been like, out front on this issue. And it's been incredibly challenging and trying to catch up with the science and understand what's happening. So, like, just thank you all for the hard work that you've been doing. And it's been a massive effort to try to get a handle on all of it. You know, and this is like, in the context of us trying to catch up to the science, and we know that the companies that manufacture these chemicals have known since, what, the 50s, 60s, that this stuff was super toxic, incredibly persistent. So that's why they're called forever chemicals, because they stay in the environment. So this whole idea that it gets diluted in the water, but we know it's sticking around somewhere, and it's accumulating somewhere. And so, you know, knowing, just saying like, dilution is the solution to pollution is not, not a great choice in this instance. And like, we don't have a lot of good options, so it's very frustrating, and we don't have good federal leadership on these issues. I mean, it's been a challenge for decades, and this particular EPA is not going to be solving these problems for us. And so, you know, trying to struggle with what we do here. I was curious, from you all, so, I know that there's ongoing conversations, and there was legislation that asks for development of a surface water standard. Could you just talk a little bit more about, you know, I know, again, like, that's being out front nationally, so there's not a lot of good models, but where does that stand? What's the timeline for that? Where are you seeing that head? Just because that would intersect with what we, that have to meet.
Sure, so the report on that just came out a few weeks ago, but I can make a summary here for you. Basically, Act 21 requires the DEC to file a rule for surface water standards by the 1st of January 2024. And there are three or four major recommendations that came out of the report, but ANR generally recommends to not develop a Vermont-specific criteria at this time, due to the data gaps and the costs associated, and then the uncertainty associated with those. This is the first time that EPA, or, I'm sorry, that DEC would develop a water quality criteria for something that the EPA doesn't already have a criteria for. So it puts us out in front of the EPA, as you've mentioned. But the major recommendations were, for, the first thing was to establish a human health criteria using fish tissue concentrations. So, using the human health criteria expressed in fish tissue, and then issuing consumption advisory screening levels, rather than a water quality limit, numeric limit in water. And then, we're going to track the EPA development, because their action plan for PFAS is to have an ambient water quality criteria standard for aquatic life by 2022. So, I understand that there is a distrust of what's happening in the current administration with the EPA, but looking to them as the federal backstop is important for us because of the, the costs and the regulatory uncertainty with creating a standard that would be different than what we would be held to once the federal criteria comes out.
So do you, are you concerned about our current drinking water standard, which the federal government doesn't have a drinking water standard yet, and ours is more protective?
No, no, I wouldn't say that I'm, I'm concerned about that. That's based on human health and consumption. This is a more complex media and issue, when you're looking at surface water. The last recommendation was for us to continue to collaborate with the Region One states, and so New England, EPA Region One, and also to, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, and to, as Nick was saying, source reduction. So those were the major outcomes from that water quality development doc, criteria development document.
Just a couple more questions. So, could you describe a little, partly, I mean, I know that there are, it's challenging to even figure out how to filter, and, you know, what works for long chains might not be as good for short chains, and all these complicating factors. What, so it looked like there were nine samples taken, which is what we're basing this on. What kind of monitoring protocol, I'm partly interested, and I think that we as a council should think about, if we're going to continue taking leachate from Casella, that maybe they should be paying for an extensive monitoring program, so we can get better data and a handle on what is coming out of our facility, and start making, having some better informed decisions based on good data. I mean, I'm a little surprised that you're not, I mean, I understand, stuff goes into the landfill, we all contribute stuff that contains PFAS, but Casella also does have a role here, and the fact that they're kind of being let off the hook from anything you're talking about. So, just monitoring what could be done there, and that, and then I was also thinking about, you know, you talked about how the state, I know there's conversations happening about pretreatment of the leachate before it would come somewhere to the Mount Pelear facility, I think, as a council, plus you, should think about, if we're going to continue taking the leachate, that maybe we require that within a year, there needs to be a plan for what's happening with that pretreatment. We're not, this shouldn't be on us to do that. We could stop taking the leachate, or we could put some parameters around our willingness to take it, knowing that we're contributing to this problem. So I just love your thoughts on kind of where that stands, where those conversations are going, you know, understanding this is a huge challenge, and there's no easy answers here, but just what your thoughts would be on those kinds of ideas?
So I'll, I'll address the monitoring component, and then maybe pass it over to Nick for the pretreatment stuff, discussion. For the monitoring, at the landfill, we do require them to monitor the leachate through our solid waste certification with them. And that's been an ongoing monitoring program that's been in place since the landfill has been certified. PFAS is a new addition to that, and so we are going forward, be getting PFAS results from the bulk tank, which is what's going to your wastewater facility, as part of that monitoring report. And, you know, certainly would be, that's available information for anybody, but if we see any significant changes in the PFAS concentrations, we're going to want to be looking at why that's happening in the landfill, and then considering the implications of that. Part of this intensive, multi-event sampling program that we did over a few months period was to try and get at that question of PFAS, does it fluctuate? Are there sources coming in that make it spike way up? And... And surprisingly, to me, a little bit, it was pretty stable, both at the, within the landfill leachate and at the wastewater facilities. So, you know, even though there, there may be fluctuations in the sources, there's this kind of capacity of the system that's evening things out.
So would, could you speak to, just on the monitoring point? I mean, developing a monitoring protocol for our own effluent that Casella, I think, should pay for? Is there, is there any precedent of?
There's no precedent that I know of for that, and it is not something that Casella currently is doing. I, you know, I think you guys can explore whatever you want, but we do have data available for you to, to base that.
Before, yeah, of what's going into entering this.
Correct.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing too, and I think Nick did mention that, but when we looked at the different wastewater treatment facilities, how many did we test?
We, just over 20 facilities.
20 facilities, so the ones that didn't take leachate?
Still had.
Still had PFAS. So even if you eliminate leachate, you're still likely to have PFAS. Certainly it was lower levels. As we said, we're not denying the high concentrations of PFAS and leachate, but recognize, I think the approach that Nick and Amy are talking about by going after sources is really an important first step, and we're absolutely committed to doing that. How quickly we'll see results and how effective is really still uncertain, but that is something the state absolutely knows is the smart and right thing to do. How we stop it from the landfill is a challenge. Casey's group is working really hard with Casella to try to reduce the amount of leachate that's generated. Also a challenge, but that's something that, obviously, it's in their best interest to do that. So that's another thing, if we can reduce the volume of leachate, that would also be an advantage.
Jack and then Dan, unless there's more comments, yeah.
I was just, I was just going to speak to the pre-treatment permit quickly. So I wouldn't say Casella's totally off the hook with regulating PFAS. I mean, right now, so the state, the state authorizes Casella to discharge leachate to the Montpelier wastewater treatment facility, Burlington wastewater treatment facility, Essex Junction, Berry, and maybe one more. And that permit is an authorization to discharge that. So, we're, we're in the process of renewing that permit, which, we're considering the, the study that Casella did, looking at treatment alternatives for PFAS. And we're considering all this monitoring data that we have for PFAS concentrations in leachate and PFAS concentrations at wastewater treatment facilities in residuals and sludge and in effluent. And we'll make a decision when we issue the permit as to whether or not Casella needs to perform routine monitoring of PFAS and/or treatment of, of PFAS and, and other emerging contaminants using this data that we've gathered. One difficult part in all of this is the lack of a published standard. It makes regulating and giving limits on certain contaminants really difficult when we don't have a, a published standard. So there are a few ways that we're looking at to see whether or not there's, there's a workaround for that, but we are considering regulating PFAS in, in leachate.
Thanks, that's helpful. And from, like, reading the report Casella did, I mean, it seemed like pre-treatment onsite is a, is a choice. It's expensive, so they don't recommend it. Understandably, they say places like Montpelier should pay for it instead, or do it and do a cost sharing or something. But, you know, obviously they, their own study, they have their own financial interest in the recommendations that they, but yeah, I mean, it is expensive and somewhere it's gotta be paid for.
You know, if, if their permit didn't allow them to discharge PFAS above X levels, it wouldn't be a choice. You know, obviously they'd have to, you know, they would have an opportunity to appeal that permit, which goes back to the standard, right? Like, that's why it's important to have your permit limits based on, you know, standards and, you know, regulations, right? So they're defensible. But, so it's, it's a challenging issue, but it's something that we are considering. And like I said, we're looking at a few different, you know, we're, we're going to be considering it in the renewal, which is coming up pretty soon. They just released that study looking at the treatment alternatives. We're working with a third-party consultant to review that study, because we're all very knowledgeable in PFAS, but we're not industry experts. So, we've, we're, we sent out an RFP and we've received some proposals back and I'm not sure if, has the, has it been awarded yet?
Yeah.
Yes, we've awarded this contract to a third-party consultant who is qualified in, in PFAS and emerging contaminants and leachate, and they'll, they'll review that study and make sure Casella, we've asked them to look at, you know, the costs that Casella used and the assumptions that Casella used and evaluate whether or not Casella missed anything, you know? Is there something else out there that they omitted or something like that? So, so we're going to get that report and then, then we'll make a permitting decision.
Thank you.
What Lauren was talking about was just what, where my mind is going too. You know, you said, well, you don't wanna have a Vermont standard, because there's, in some, hopefully finite number of years, there will be a federal standard established. I'm, it's kind of an interesting question of economics and regulation. If there's no state, if there's no standard for anyone, then Montpelier could say, well, we're not gonna take it unless you either reduce the level in the leachate or pay us for the carbon or reverse osmosis systems. And I can imagine some other plant that they could be going to might say, well, we'll just underbid Montpelier by not requiring them to pay for that. And, and so regulation is, is vital here. And I don't know how to anticipate what's, what's gonna come out of the EPA, but it's, it strikes me as a serious problem that if, if one actor goes it alone and, and we decide, well, we're gonna be the most environmentally responsible plant, we, we say, no, you're not gonna do that unless, they say, well, fine, we'll take, we'll take, we'll take our revenue that we're paying you and send it somewhere else.
Maybe upstream of us. So is there any system in place such that if the levels, the PFAS level should spike and go particularly high, such that it would create a danger if it was discharged in surface water, that we would be alerted to that?
So our monitoring program is, is not daily, it's semi-annual, from a mixed tank that is both old leachate from older portions of the cell and newer leachate. So, the, the older portions, I don't think are gonna fluctuate significantly. The newer stuff is where the uncertainty is. And, and we do not currently monitor on a level to address that uncertainty. With that said, what we've seen for concentrations to date, the, the guidelines that Chuck was referring to in terms of, if the leachate were to pass straight through the wastewater facility with no dilution and come out at the end of the pipe, that we were, the, the guidelines that we were comfortable with at this point in time, based off of what we know, are orders of magnitude higher than what we've seen. So for, for PFOWA, one of the compounds that these guidelines were established, it was 120,000 PPT. What we're seeing is around 1,000 to 2,000 PPT. So, for, and similarly for the other compound. So for a spike to be at a level that would cause immediate acute concern for us right now, it would have to be a very significant change in the system, either at the landfill or within the wastewater facility. And I think we all have an open line of communication that we should know what that change would be if something were to happen before seeing it in the PFAS results.
Okay, but there is no sort of formal, it would be more, someone would happen to look at this and maybe feel motivated to call, as opposed to required?
For the PFAS concentrations, yes, but we are monitoring lots of other components of the landfill and the wastewater facility. So I guess what I'm trying to say is there's other things that would trigger us to look at PFAS.
So it's likely that the PFAS wouldn't necessarily be the sole spiking concentration level, that there'd be other, other red flags?
There would be something making it spike up to a, a level that would.
And then I had a, a second question, so thanks for that, I, I think I understand that. And I think, you know, from our perspective, it may be something we wanna revisit when we revisit our contract with Casella. But along those lines, and knowing that there's a certain desire not to have a standard that is going to be out in front before the EPA gets there or even the region gets there, has there been any thought to having the various facilities such as Montpelier, Newport, Berry, work together with you to sort of set some basic framework for this? Because it strikes me that, you know, what Jack and Lauren's concerned, that, you know, if, if we do all of a sudden create this, this standard, that it, it becomes economically easier for them to truck it to New Hampshire or somewhere else. It strikes me that there's a balance point too, where you can impose some sort of control if the current recipients of this leachate would work together with you. And you would seem, the state would seem to be the logical nexus point to have that, where, you know, there might be some controls that would be short of standards or guidelines that would be the sort of legally binding components that you don't necessarily wanna get in front of, but that we would work with you and with Barry and with Newport to say, well, okay, these are the threshold things we need, such as a monitoring system with regular intervals for this type of testing. And we can agree that if it goes beyond this level, we need to be warned and it needs to be action taken, or even looking towards, well, if the EPA doesn't move, we need to think about treatment such that it, it's more of a partnership kind of, you know, it's, it's the slow boil of regulation rather than the, the quick imposition. Is there anything in the process for that or willingness to sort of have us come into that sort of collective action?
So, I think the pre-treatment permit is an opportunity to have that conversation.
Okay.
And I envision, you know, maybe monitoring of, of PFAS is, is an option as, you know, who pays for that monitoring? I'm, I'm not sure how, how that would work out, but another option you have is using the provisions in your sewer use ordinance to require, you know, Casella to pay for...
Right. Well, no, I mean, I understand that we can do stuff individually, we can even work with them in, in our contract. And I, you know, part of it too, as I should say, I mean, it's not as if Casella's creating these PFAS, they're just the ones who got dumped first on them. You know, they're at the, they're at the top of the hill and it's flowing down. So it's, but it's a matter of, okay, if we have to deal with this, you know, what's the sort of collective way of dealing with this? And you said the, the permits in process are being renewed?
Yeah, so we're gonna be, yeah, we're gonna be renewing that permit this spring, early summer. That's...
So I mean, does it make any sense to have, you know, representatives of these various, say Kurt or somebody who can meet with you and?
Oh, yeah, they will. And that's typically, that's, that's how the process goes. I mean, Vermont's one of the only states where the state issues these types of permits. Normally it's the municipality that issues these permits, but in our case, I'm the lucky person that gets to issue all of them. And, yeah, you know, typically how it goes is I meet with the municipality, in this case, municipalities that are being affected or that are receiving the industrial discharge, and we discuss, you know, what sort of monitoring requirements are necessary, what sort of limits are necessary, and what sort of best management practices, treatment, et cetera, are necessary for the permit to protect the plant's operations, to protect sludge quality so that the plant can dispose of their residuals, to protect surface waters, and to protect worker health and safety too. So, you know, you don't want industries discharging toxic fumes into the collection system, stuff like that. So, yeah, we sit down with the municipality and we, we figure out all of that. I will say though, that it needs to be defensible.
Sure. No, I understand it can't just be arbitrary and capricious.
Yeah.
I've certainly challenged A and R on such things before.
Yeah.
And won, but no. Sorry. Anyway.
If I could follow up on that point for just a minute.
By winning and against A and R?
I'm happy to hear that, but no, but I, not to get all legal and everything, but if I were the lawyer for a landfill operator, I would say, when you're talking about collective action by a number of participates, participants in a market, another name for that is antitrust. And so that, I could see that as a way of, that someone would, would challenge it if, if it's not based on some regulation that can be shown to be valid.
Right.
Dan, did you have anything further?
No, I just, I, I think I understand and I, I think that, that that makes sense to, to go forward. And if you're already working with, with Kurt and others and sort of setting some of these standards, that's, and, and understanding that they do, they do have to be defensible, they do have to be standards that are rooted in some authority that you have as well as some cognizable standard. So, that's all.
Jack, did you have anything further?
No.
Donna?
So, I'd like to build on that conversation and ask, instead of looking at as a rule, how about a roundtable of municipals, landfills, and the state in doing best practices, recommendations, very strongly on the high of prevention, prevention, prevention? Because even when you're talking, in the memo that I believe Kurt sent us, he says that leachate comes from, all landfills have it. And yet someone else said, when you were testing 20, some had the PFAS and some didn't have leachate. Did I misunderstand what you said?
So I think we did hit a disconnect there. So, all landfills do produce leachate.
Okay.
All, all landfills produce leachate.
Okay, great.
We do only have a handful that are line landfills that have collection systems here in Vermont.
Ah, okay.
And so we have five of those. The, the 20 facilities that we were referring to are wastewater facilities that were sampled. And all the wastewater facilities also had PFAS within their influence in effluent.
Okay.
Even the ones that didn't take leachate? Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And likewise, now, I'm disturbed because it says it was test, you tested it in 2018 and it was at 10, and it jumped to 69 point, which you're all rounding off to 70. Now to me, that's, in one year's time, it went from a 10 to a 70? Now that's concerned. And yet you said from the time now, you feel it's steady. So help me understand that.
Yep.
So I think the issue was the number of samples. The, the first study only, I think, was just one or two samples, very, very small number of sample points, whereas the second study had a total of nine points, I believe. So you get a much better representative sample of what's actually happening in the effluent. So it just wasn't enough data points, and even nine is, you know, fairly small amount to really get a true representative sample of what's happening. So I think...
And I think too, part of this might be, and I haven't looked at the, that 2018 data in a little bit, but we were looking at two compounds at that point in time and now we're looking at five for our, that's our, our health advisory. And so that's what we were tallying.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I don't know what that 2018 sum of the five would be, but I think it's closer to the...
So the same term was used, even though one had five elements?
Right, our, our health advisory changed during that timeline. And that's, that's the only thing we have to compare to right now, so that's what we're using kind of as our discussion.
I think 70's too many, sorry. Thank you.
Glenn? I don't think it jumped up, I think it's just a comparison.
And just to follow up on that last point, that the, the standards changed to add more individual chemicals to the same standard, there are more chemicals that could be added, yes? So is that something we should be concerned about? I think earlier there was some, a point in the conversation when it was stated that, you know, the, the class of these chemicals is thousands and we are testing for a very small number of those currently.
We really don't have a good answer, that's an absolutely great point and we recognize it. The legislature did ask us to look at a way to regulate PFAS as a class. It's done in other contaminants like PCBs, you can measure for one of the aeroclores and know that if it's at that level, you can be comfortable. But I... if it's at that level, you can be comfortable. But I think we just don't know so much about these 4,000-plus chemicals that we think it's really, certainly really hard for Vermont to do that. There is pressure for EPA to look at that, but still, I don't think the science is out there. But we're looking for, how many now? We, 24. So we're looking at 24 of 4,000. And our health department toxicologist is looking at those. There's not a lot of health-based data for those. So we really can't answer that question, but it's an absolute 100% valid point.
I'm gonna jump in here. I have a whole bunch of questions as well. So, we've talked about filtration, the possibilities for filtering. I know that they're considered forever chemicals, but is there any known way of decomposing PFASs?
Science is in its infancy. So one thing that we did early in the program is do a takeback of firefighting foam that fire departments around the state had, the older foam that had really high concentrations of PFOS. And we got all these compound, all these, 2,500 gallons of these pails of firefighting foam. And then we had a fair amount of opposition to, well, what are you gonna do with them? Where are you gonna take them? And the best science says you can incinerate them, that it will destroy it over a certain temperature. That's still under debate. So we were gonna use a facility in Ohio that had some issues, and it was brought to our attention, which was actually a very valuable thing that happened. And we ended up taking it, disposing of it at a cement kiln in New York that burned at a higher temperature. But to be honest, we're not 100% confident that that destroys 100%. But the science, as of today, says a certain temperature will destroy these chemicals. But a lot more study has to be done to determine that.
I'd just say, I also would be worried about the chemistry of what might be coming out on the other end of the incineration. That could look a whole bunch of different ways, I imagine, and, you know, all kinds of other interesting exotic results. Okay, so that's, I've also heard that pyrolysis can also potentially decompose PFASs, except for that it's effectively also incineration. It's basically the same. I mean, I know it's not the same, but, you know, high temperature, high pressure, anyway. I assume that's also in the, if you consider incineration as separate from pyrolysis, that that also would be effective? Or we don't know?
Yeah, we definitely don't know. We've heard from a local individual that's very excited about this technology. And at this point, we just don't have enough information to say yes or no. It was not one of the technologies that the Casella's report looked at, consultant looked at. But we could ask our third party to weigh in on that.
I think I also heard from the same enthusiastic individual. So in terms of reducing sources, I mean, I know we talked about furniture. I thought I read in some of the material ahead of time that these chemicals have been banned in the United States, or that manufacturing in the United States is not as common now. Is that, is that correct? Am I remembering that correctly?
Not necessarily banned. There was a voluntary agreement to phase them out, and it was PFOA and PFOS, not some of the other shorter chain. And then we have been learning that some of the replacements can actually break down into PFOA and others. So it's still there.
Okay.
And then also remember, when you're throwing out carpet in the landfill, it's probably 10, 20 years old. So, you know, it was used when...
When it was...
That type of Scotchgard or stain-resistant material was used with a higher concentration.
It's interesting to hear that umbrellas, for example, were, you know, a high concentration source. I mean, it makes me wonder if, you know, knowing that the history of this chemical is in affiliation with Teflon, then, you know, it makes me think that, like, okay, so umbrellas are kind of shiny, like, they're nylon. Does, is there a correlation there with, like, the types of fabrics that one might, you know, the, I assume, I assume umbrellas are nylon, maybe there's something else, but that that type of material, like polyesters, synthetic materials like that, that that's the kind of textiles that we're talking about?
I think it's more product use. So it is stain-resistency, water repellency, those types of activities, not necessarily material.
Okay. But it's the function of the material that, okay. That is interesting and helpful. Thanks. And then, so just in terms of thinking about our water treatment facility, so do, I assume that we have different tipping fees for leachate versus septicage? And I assume it's higher for leachate? It's not?
Nope.
Okay. How, so as we move forward with monitoring ourselves, how, do we have any estimates as to how much we anticipate spending in terms of monitoring for PFASs moving into the future?
I mean, so far, the monitoring has been conducted by the state of Vermont. The city hasn't done PFAS monitoring individually to date.
Okay. And that, does that also occur semi-annually?
The PFAS monitoring that we did was kind of like a one-time event, where we did nine samples at approximately 20 wastewater treatment facilities across the state, affluent, effluent, and sludge.
Do you anticipate that that would be yearly, or...
No, it was just kind of like a one-time event.
One-time thing.
Yeah, that we had money to do the sampling. And then now we have a Phase 2 sampling that's coming up. And we're plan, we're trying to figure out what we want to sample. Some of the things we're considering are industrial users connected to the wastewater treatment facility, leachates. We're still talking about what we want to sample using that money.
Okay. And when does our contract with Casella come up again for renewal?
There is no official contract.
There's no official contract. Okay. So, since this is an emerging issue, I mean, it seems like monitoring moving on in the future would be logical, potentially. And so then the, I feel like the question is going to be, like, whose responsibility is it? I mean, does it continue to be the state's? Fair enough. And then how are you all paying for that? I suppose that's not, not my issue to worry about. But in case, you know, if it does come to the city to take on monitoring that, I mean, it seems like that would be a logical thing to build into the tipping fee for leachate. And then, but in addition to that, you know, as you're considering the, you know, approving the pretreatment...
Permit.
Permit, thank you. I mean, I wonder, we sort of talked about this a little bit earlier in Dan's comment, but just thinking about, could a condition of their permit be obligating them to work with treatment sites to share in cost monitoring, or to, or to, you know, shoulder the cost monitoring, or the monitoring costs, or even anticipating some kind of filtration or decomposition? You know, do we, like, how, or, oh, gosh. Anyway, I know that there's more research that needs to be done. So there's possibilities there. But just thinking about, like, how can we, this seems like an opportunity to say, you know, you need to be helping us monitor and share the burden for monitoring, and then potentially treatment. Yeah, and so you have something to say? And then, Dan?
Yeah. I don't envision the permit talking about who pays for the monitoring, sharing costs associated with the monitoring. Typically, the way the permit works is the permitee is responsible for meeting the requirement. And however they meet that requirement, as long as it's, you know, within our standards, is how they meet that requirement. So that, I can envision something like, you know, like an agreement or an MOU, or something between the town and Casella to work out how to pay for the monitoring. But the permit won't, won't get into cost sharing and stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
I guess my reaction as far as the monitoring, it seems it's going to be much more effective by doing it at the source, where this leachate is coming from, these tanks, that rather than, because after, if we're measuring, if we're monitoring our output, it's already out there. Whereas if we can install the monitoring before any type, you know, we know what we're receiving, or at least have these warning signals. But it does sound like this is ultimately something that's going to be resolved by both the permit, as well as our relationship with Casella, and trying to work out some of those details privately that the permit won't necessarily cover.
Great. And Lauren, I know you had something. Sorry.
Just, so we've talked about the effluent. What's the sludge situation? Did Montpelier's sludge get tested? And then can you remind me what happens? Does that all go back to the landfill?
That's correct.
Yep.
Did ours get tested, and what was the result of that?
I think Amy has been pretty quiet all night.
All right. I wanted to bring you into the fun.
Yeah, we tested 22 facilities solids. And I won't get into the complicated nature of what happens to all those solids, because it depends on what you, how you treat it, what you do. I don't think Montpelier's was necessarily a lot higher than any of the others. And, you know, currently it is going to the landfill. So that's kind of a closed loop in a way, although that's probably arguable. And, you know, other facilities in the state do have various disposal options, but most of, about half of it goes to the landfill in the state. And the landfill also takes sludges from out of state. So they take, I would say, three-quarters of the sludges they take comes from out of state. Is that right?
So we're not land applying, ours at least. I just, one other, I mean, I guess it was kind of brought up the worker issues. I don't know if there's any potential, like, concern of exposure at the facility for you all, or if there's any, anything that you guys at DEC would be concerned about, or considerations that the facility should be thinking about to ensure that our workers are not being exposed?
We don't. Yeah, we don't have any concerns regarding that right now. When we talk about worker health and safety, it's mostly like vapor, like toxicity from like vapors and flammable substances and stuff like that. But, yeah, we don't, we don't have any concerns with that right now. We will look into it during the permit renewal. But I don't, I haven't heard of any other wastewater treatment facility seeing that as an issue.
Yeah, I think, I think in these conversations, and I'm gonna speak from a really high level, but I think that you, when we start looking at really low numbers in per petrillions and effluents and things like that, you have to think about also what your relative exposure is and what the real health risks are. Most of us are coming into contact with these materials through household dust, and hopefully not through your water. And that's really the state's primary concern, is making sure that everybody is drinking clean, safe water. I don't, I know that I drink from Lake Champlain, and was a Burlingtonian, but, and that water's tested, and so far, so good. And I think it's a pretty big dilution factor there. But, you know, I think the nature of this compound is very difficult, because it can volatilize, can be in the air, it can be right on the surface of water, it can cling to solids, it likes to stick to certain charges. So it's a very unique compound, perfect water repellent, all those things. And I would say that it's certainly something to think about. I mean, I think exposure at a wastewater plant is something to think about. And I think that there is likely to be ongoing research in that area in the future. That's probably something to leave for academia and for grants and for funding to figure out if there's an issue. But, but no, I think that, you know, I think we all underestimate that we are exposed to these compounds pretty regularly. And it's usually through your household dust or your food packaging, or things like that, or your coats, or things like that. And I know we made a report, and I know we presented data comparing five compounds to a drinking water standard. But we gotta keep in mind that this is effluent from a wastewater plant, not drinking water. We're not drinking the water from the Menueski. That said, the fish tissue consumption is something that needs to be worked on, and it will be. There's lots of states working on that. Well, not a lot, but there's, there's handfuls of states working on that. And whether or not there ends up being fish tissue consumption advisories, it's too early to say. But we already have some in place for mercury and things like that at Lake Champlain that are probably already protective enough.
One other thought. So I'm just thinking about the, if there's any risk of liability the city now knowingly taking in, and even though, you know, at this point, levels are low, but, you know, all the research that comes out keeps showing lower and lower levels are more toxic. So that's the trend. And knowing that there's the 4,000 chemicals that we're just beginning to understand, so in the kind of precautionary model, is there, is there a risk of liability to the city now that we have, you know, a memo on record and this conversation of knowing that there's this, this toxic chemical that we're, you know, releasing? I know there's been a lot of conversations at the State House about medical monitoring for people exposed to toxic chemicals. There was a bill that passed that unfortunately the governor vetoed that exempted municipalities, but now that doesn't exist. And there was a court decision recently that said people could go after medical monitoring. So for example, the fish tissue was making me think of it. If somebody fishes, I mean, if you're fishing right outside the wastewater treatment facility, but, and, you know, could somebody be exposed and make a case that they are exposed? And now cities are on the hook because of this court decision and lack of a statute that exempted municipalities. Is there any risk that the state is taking on to knowingly continue to do this? And I don't, that's not your, that's just the thing.
And keep in mind, you know, your wastewater facility is passing through, right? This, these materials are coming to you, and they're passing through. It's, it is somewhat similar to the landfill in a way. They're, they're accepting garbage from everybody in the state, and it's passing through the system, and it's coming out the other end, and we have to do something with it. And it's not a perfect solution. But, you know, everybody in society's contributing to this problem. And, you know, outside of liability, it's, it really is, I see wastewater treatment plants being referred to as sources, and they're really not. The wastewater plant is not adding PFAS in between when it comes to, goes out the backend. So that may not speak to liability, but it's a way to look at it.
So one thing I don't know if we mentioned, I know it's been in the press, but the state is going after the manufacturers of these chemicals. As Lauren said, there's really solid evidence to show that back in the 50s, 60s, probably even 40s, they knew the stuff was bad. So the idea would be if we were to win and were to get a settlement, we would hopefully create some funds that we could help municipalities, Montpelier being certainly a prime one, deal with this issue. But as we know how lawsuits go, it's probably not going to be anytime soon that we reach that end game. But the state is certainly committed to trying to help us get resources to deal with this problem.
Any further questions? Anything else? Donna?
I just want to thank you all. You have such knowledge, and you've been so open about it. And I hope when you go to your job, realize you're very valuable to us. So keep it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks for having all of us. And I'm definitely proud of, I mean, these guys are doing the work, and they really deserve the credit. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Part of me wants to go back to the high school where I teach and say, hey, chemistry teacher, you need to watch this section of the council meeting, because chemistry matters. And here's an example. Do your kids take chemistry? Okay. What's that? Exactly. Yeah. Now, this, here it is, like, in the world, mattering. So thank you all so much.
We have to ask them if they thought they'd have to be in front of city council when they got their degrees.
Definitely not.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
I am going to make one further adjustment in the agenda, which is to move item 12, the homelessness task force, item two, right now, just because I know there are some folks here interested in talking about it. So, right, so, so there, we have a request, and actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Cameron, invite the members of the homelessness task force to come on up and tell us about this item.
So I am the staff representative for this committee. I do want the homelessness task force committee to really talk about this. Since it is a funding ask, I have no opinion. Thank you.
If you would mind introducing yourself.
Sure. Ken Russell, Chair of the homelessness task force.
Sure. Ken Russell, Chair of the homelessness task force.
Zach Hughes, member of the homeless task force.
Jody Kelly, member of the homeless task force.
It's a little bit of a mouthful. Thank you for hearing from us. You should all have this memo that city staff, i.e. Cameron, worked very hard on and did some really good work. And, and I think we've sort of made the case previously to you, the importance of sanitation downtown, it kind of follows nicely after the last conversation. And it's a need that I think would help address the concerns of the downtown merchants. Certainly the need for downtown bathrooms has been expressed by merchants. Jody's a representative of the MBA on our task force. There, you know, we, you know, we came up with a couple of citing ideas, and based on the mayor's feedback today, we want to make sure that one of those bathrooms was near the downtown, you know, near the business downtown, which makes good sense. And it's a portage on. And I, I think it does seem like it would be really good for the vitality and quality of life downtown for better public bathrooms to be put together in time. And somebody had mentioned, you know, the information booths, it probably belongs to the state, but, you know, I can, it'd be a beautiful building for it, something to think about. I know that people have asked about the transit center. I know that GMT owns that. I don't know what the, you know, what sort of negotiations could look like at some point. But we do appreciate Cameron and Bill's responsiveness on this topic. And, and then the lockers, the lockers is, I think we've explained it before, but the basic idea is folks are out there, get their gear stolen, gets wet, you know, their lives are in chaos. And so this is a good, inexpensive, practical way to help give people a stronger platform and help them move along towards a healthier way of being. So, do you want to add anything?
So I represent the Montpelier Business Association, and recently I sent a survey out to the business community, asking them what they thought the most pressing issues were with regards to the homeless situation. And many of the, consistently it was the accessible bathrooms, 24-hour accessible bathrooms. Many of the businesses, including myself, spend a lot of time cleaning up, cleaning up, you know, excrement from our sidewalks, from our yards. It's not only a terrible eyesore, but it's also a human health hazard. We have laws against public urination and defecation, but there isn't a solution. I think it would be fair to say that most people would choose to be inside a bathroom than to lose their dignity having to go to the bathroom outs, out on the sidewalk. It isn't any mystery that we all need to avoid. If we don't, we die. And so we really definitely need to give people the opportunity to do that in a dignified and a health-conscious way. Sorry, I lost my train of thought here. The other, the other situation that helps to support the need for 24-hour bathrooms is from the business community in that there's lots of people that need a bathroom to use, not just the homeless. We, our businesses sit right within the farmer's market, and which is a wonderful place to be surrounded by. It's such an amazing event from spring until fall, and we really love to be there and be in the hustle and bustle. But, you know, last year during that time, on a Saturday, a four-hour period of time that the farmer's market was going, we would have, on the average, 20 people come through our front area into the bathroom and use it. And it's not that we had said they could use it, but they, the vendors decided that that was what they were going to do. And I love farmers, but they wear big muddy boots, and they track that through the hospital. And I'll tell you, my staff was just like, enough, we're not doing this any longer. So we did towards the end of the season just say, you guys, we can't. But the problem is, is they'd have to walk to city hall to use the bathroom, and they can't leave their stands for that long. So there's definitely, you know, the situation for them also is to have a reliable source, which it makes sense for the, one of the bathrooms to be down on the Taylor, Taylor Street area. And then the one other concern would be monitoring it, keeping it clean. If we have, you know, we have a lot of tourists in the area, and they love coming to Montpelier, it's such a wonderful place. But we don't want eyesores. We want to make sure that it's being monitored, and, you know, last thing anybody needs is to go into a bathroom that's really dirty. So that's the viewpoint of the businesses.
And just to be clear, that this is, you know, a stopgap measure, and there's this, what Cameron found is a, is a company that does service the units once a month, but we're looking at expedite, you know, more frequent. And Zach, you have some words?
Yes, I do have some words. You know, I do, I did end up sympathizing with the business community on a Sunday. I was transiting through the main street, and the strong smell of urine was very present, was very strong. It was all, it wasn't just in one area, it was straight down to the corner. And I even let Ken know immediately that I was concerned and that we needed to prioritize this. I think, I've also heard from others, what are we doing about those bathrooms? Because, you know, that, and I've even, yeah, ever since joining this committee, I've had pictures of myself being out there, what would I do in those situations? And I think it's, you know, I have to agree, my colleagues here, that it is an important issue. Lockers are equally as important as the people, a place to store their belongings, basic stuff. We're not talking about the grandmother's photo album, I said that today. But a basic dignified way of doing it. And I continue to thank the city and the city council for working on this process with us. We are the leader here in this right now. And so I just thank you for that. And I want to close real quick, I'm just thanking Glenn for his service on the committee. Okay, I know, and he said he was welcome to come back if he wanted to.
He's done.
Said he was done. Okay, so we really appreciate that. We would invite anybody to come by the committee during our time, you know, because I think learning about the processes and stuff is really important, you know, and especially when you have new counselors come on, that would be really cool. So thank you for your time tonight.
So I think, like, the first thing that comes to mind is, we probably all agree, once a month service in the portable bathrooms is pretty insufficient. So the question might actually be for Cameron, what, what city staff would be responsible for this?
None.
Do they have the capacity?
No. So the proposal would be to have a company provide the bathrooms of their portages, so it would be monitored and cleaned by that company. It would not be coming from city staff. So that was something we could definitely look into if we contract out with for the service, how often they're coming and servicing the bathrooms.
Okay.
I'll echo Connor's.
I'll echo Connor's comments, because I, it could be worse than having none if they're insufficiently monitored. Having been on many a campout.
That means the price we have is a once-a-month monitoring price?
That's what they quoted me. So that's up for debate. If that means we, if this money is approved, we go into contract, maybe it would start in April instead of March, just to fit within that budget constraint.
I just want to note, the location of the portage on, on, well, it says near Taylor Street or off the bike path, just where the X is at that point is probably, I would advocate that it not be quite exactly there, just because that is, I mean, that's, that's like the site of the new Confluence Park, which I know was still in progress, but that's kind of a vista right there. And so it'd just be kind of a, I think it'd be an odd place to have a porta potty there.
I think once we get this, if this is approved, if y'all do approve this, we can work with staff, like the committee can work with staff to come up with a more appropriate place in that area.
Yeah, and I agree. I think having it somewhere in that area, that makes sense. And to be fair, we, you know, that's a piece of property that we own, and so it makes sense for it to be somewhere on that piece of property, because we don't have to ask anyone else's permission. But, but there, it may, I mean, who knows, there might be another landowner that would be willing to host it, knowing that it's going to be serviced by somebody else, if it's in a logical place. So I just want to keep that option open, depending on who might be willing to, if there are other places that might be willing to, to host it. Other comments? Jack?
I think this is, there's a real need for this. I, we're, we're in, we're faced with the situation of once again, having a request for city funds now, you know, outside of the budget process. And so it's a, it's a small funding request, but I'm, has the city staff identified availability of funds and source of funds for this?
I've been told by our finance director that we could make this small amount work within our current budget.
Thanks. Another question that occurred to me, looking at the, should we talk about the bathrooms first and then the lock, okay, I'll hold the other question.
Any comments about, oh, yes, go ahead.
Sorry. The only other thing is, I mean, this is very clearly a temporary solution. And has the committee talked about more permanent solutions? I mean?
Just, just roughly, you know, speculatively, I mean, I mentioned, you know, that information booth looks like a nice, you know.
I think that has been used as a.
Yeah, well, yeah, excuse me. But no, I mean, that, I mean, I, no, not really in detail. And, and again, I think this is a good partnership with the business community, a good common cause.
Right. Well, I mean, it strikes me as something that goes beyond simply this immediate need to a larger, you know, you're talking about the farmer's market, and we're talking about, you know, we're no longer talking about really the homeless population, but we're talking about the public, the public, you know, that circulates downtown, and, you know, its impact on businesses, that the businesses don't necessarily provide these facilities, but, you know, a family that comes to the farmer's market that, you know, the kids need to go, you know, what kind, a lot of towns that attract this type of population of visitors will have these facilities, and we don't necessarily have them. I mean, there, we've got some in city hall, but, you know, this may be the sort of next step. And it seems like it would be, you know, while this may go beyond your charge, it does seem like it's, it would be nice to see a more permanent solution proposed, and given you're looking into this already.
Okay, so we'll be renamed the homelessness and bathroom task force.
Right, right. But I mean, it does seem, I hate to put my dirty work on. At the same time, I mean, I think that this is, you know, this meets your solution, but I think it can have a broader.
Okay, yeah, and I think that's, and frankly, it's, I think for us, it feels good to, this is a solution that just is a no-brainer. And certainly in response to the merchant complaints or concerns, issues. So I think we, we, speaking not for the whole committee, but it sounds like we should, that makes good sense.
Did you have something to add?
Yeah.
Hi, Mike Miller, planning director. So I hate to be the one who's going to be showing up to go and let you know, this is not the first time that this has come to my office, and this actually hasn't come to my office. But it, you can't have portages in the floodplain. It's just a flat-out no-no. It can't happen.
That makes sense. We did move one of, like, the, the task force did have a first proposal that did have a portage on in the floodplain, and we were.
Because Confluence Park would be in the floodplain.
Okay. So obviously, this is why we have not, I mean, this is a proposal, and we will make sure we work with you and get that cleared.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, the floodplain goes, is a very large area. I mean, for State Street, it's going all the way out to the pit. So from the river to behind all those buildings is the floodplain. There's less floodplain as you go down Berry Street. So as you go down Stonecutter's Way, there's portions in Stonecutter's Way, but that's away from the farmer's market, and that's away from the downtown solution that we're looking for. There are, there are ways of getting around it, but it's something, again, it goes to a more long-term solution. You have to build up and elevate where you put the portage on, onto something. We've talked about, well, it would have to be on a, on a platform elevated, and once you're doing it, now you're talking, needing to have the ramps to be ADA accessible and all these other pieces. So it can be done in the floodplain, but it has to be elevated above the floodplain, so in a flood, it doesn't discharge the waste. And that's, and other communities in the state can kind of get, get away with it for a little while. DEC, they live and work here. They will go to our farmer's market, and they will call us. By Monday morning, I will have a phone call telling me that portage on can't stay there. And so it's just the reality of living in Montpelier, so.
Is that true for both sides of State Street?
Both sides. State Street from the river all the way to the back of the pit is all floodplain. It goes into State House lawn. It's, it's a very large area. A lot of our downtown is in the flood. And it's weird to think of it, because you think, when you get up to where the transit center is, it's actually uphill from State Street. So it's actually a kind of a weird thing that actually you're almost out of the floodplain at.
So I think that's my question, because on this little map in the memo, there's the, the two places marked are, one, right across the, right across Taylor Street from the transit center, I think, and then down in Confluence Park. Am I understanding that right? So at the.
So I didn't think that that little balloon was, I thought that balloon was just consequential of like, we're just trying to find this location. That was not, like, we're putting a portage on at the place with the balloon. Does that make sense?
So it does make sense. I think I was reading it differently, and I should have figured this out in the task force meetings all this time. But, but to me, location one, near Taylor Street off the bike path was the balloon. The second one to me was location two, we don't know, somewhere near downtown. And that was the first, the X in the Confluence Park, which is obviously not going to happen. But the Taylor Street possibility also is impossible.
I believe they would both be in the floodplain.
Unless we put it on like a fire tower.
Yeah, unless it's elevated in some, someplace.
So would it be appropriate to ask both planning and DPW to work as staff with the homeless task force to, to offer other locations to the city council to consider, or do you?
We could certainly provide maps, or if there's locations that you're thinking of, would this be in or would this be out? We could certainly go with that. And if we're looking at a larger, you know, elevating something, so it's above the floodplain, then we can get some, I mean, you know, the, the new transit center was built above the floodplain. So if you're looking at the floor of the transit center, you know, if you were going to elevate something in that area, you'd be elevating to, to about where that, where that floor is. And certainly, if you were standing there and looking towards State Street, it goes down to State Street. So if you're right on State Street, it's going to be something that'll be, you know, four or five feet up in the air.
Langdon Street, Court Street.
Those are, those are definitely, definitely three or four feet, it'd be maybe even more than that, on Langdon Street, because of the north branch. That's a flood for the north branch, so that's right on the river.
City Hall as well.
Yeah, we're, we're floodplain. Yep.
We're watching everything.
But we're in a building, so we follow under different rules, so.
I think my question for, at this point, would be, does it make sense to approve this money now, anticipating that you'll figure this out, or should we wait until there's a location before approving the money? And I don't have strong feelings about that.
I, I would have, I'd have stronger feelings to, so let's. I, I would have, I'd have stronger feelings to, so let's, let's find locations for these things to see, given the, the limitations, because it may push it so far out that either one or two doesn't make sense anymore.
Yeah, and we, and I mean, I mean, depending on your agenda, we could probably get the floodplain map tomorrow and go from there and do some thinking. It wouldn't take much.
Right.
Lauren?
And, and maybe in that, we could get the, to Connor's question about the maintenance, see if that would change the estimates, to get that answer as well, so we could have a more solid understanding.
Okay, and so let's anticipate having you all back at a future meeting.
Is there any consideration for the lockers as a separate ask?
Well, yes, so just wanted to make sure we dealt with that first. Sounds like we're generally in agreement about the.
Just one other thing about the bathrooms. I'd like to see staff talk to GMT and why that facility isn't open more, both for riders and other people. Because the city hall is 24/7. Even if it's not 24/7, it's a lot of hours that buses pass through there. And I think we should be encouraging them to staff it. So that would give us two ready-made inside bathrooms and we can supplement it with porti pots.
Just to be clear, I don't think City Hall is open 24/7. There is a bathroom, police station, 24/7.
Sorry, I say City Hall, police station.
Okay. Cool. Yes, Lauren?
One more clarifying question that kind of goes to both the lockers and the bathrooms. Can you just remind me, so we had allocated 10, we had approved up to $10,000 to open the shelter early. That whole amount was not spent because of the time lag in getting it open. And then we got the good news that the shelter can open early. Is, is that whole $10,000 has been allocated for the shelter for both ends of it? Or what's, what's the status of that money that we had previously already approved?
So the shelter is still open and plans to stay open till the end of April. So I, I won't know what that funding looks like, what that, where that money's at. It might cover it at the, but I don't know until the end of April.
But that's being held, that $10,000 to, thank you.
Okay, any comments on the lockers? Jack?
I think it's a great idea. As I was looking at this, again, as a legal aid lawyer whose career involves a lot of the time challenging what government is doing, I think I'd like to see some, there's some stuff that just wasn't clear to me that I think needs to be addressed. Like, I don't, didn't see here how many lockers there are, which is one point. Another point is assuming that there are, that there's more demand than there are lockers, how would the government decide who gets them? And if the, if the government decided to kick someone out of their locker or bar them from the locker, what would the process be for the, what's the standard? What, what would the process be for making that decision? What would be the process for a person to appeal that decision? Because it's, it would be an adverse government action that the person would have a, a right to challenge.
Possibly.
Possibly, right.
You guys lawyers or something?
Yeah, but, but I think these are questions that should be addressed.
No, that's, well, take, points well taken. Yeah.
No, those are good points.
And it could, it, it could be something as simple as first come, first served up until there's, all the resources is fully used up. You know, there are government programs that are like that where there's a certain amount of money appropriated. And when that's all spent, the, the next person, even though their need is as great as the person ahead of them online, doesn't get it because there's no more money.
So in terms of the, that initial allocation, would a lottery suffice to be equitable and fair?
I think it might, yeah.
And then, and then the other thing is the appeal, if you get kicked out and make sure that that's, there's due process or?
I would want to see some kind of due process protection, yeah.
Okay, well, or, or at least, I mean, it may make sense enough, sorry, jump in. Is that whether or not there is, I mean, due process is due when there's an interest involved, whether it be a property interest or a liberty interest. And they may not have a property interest in a, in a gratuitous rental locker. And, and it may just not, I mean, there's no reason to necessarily add it if there doesn't have to be there. But if we don't have it and it has to be there, that's where we get into trouble. And understanding what interests are created, because I'm sure other cities have done this before. And, you know, what, what process? I'm, I'm sure we can just crib from something that's been effective and that's been tested to a certain extent, so that we don't end up in a situation where, you know, the last thing we want to do is do something nice and then end up costing ourselves a lot of money to.
Win one of the other lawyers in my office.
Exactly, exactly.
You guys just stay out of it.
Don't, yeah, yeah.
The homelessness task force did benchmark this. There's actually not a whole lot of governments who are doing this work. And by not a whole lot, I mean, I didn't find any. So I did find a couple nonprofits who do this work on behalf of localities.
Is that the one you, you put in here?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any data on them or any of their policies?
I did. I, I took the, the draft that you're looking at for the locker program. The homelessness task force did a lot of work on that, but that came straight from the organization that I found that's been doing this the longest.
I mean, I, I would bet the VLCT would have some language to avoid this kind of thing. You know, it's, it just strikes me that if it was very clear from the beginning that you, you don't have a, necessarily a right or an interest in this, only to say that this is something you're, you know, will give you access to this locker. It's really a service and a gratuity, but there's no guarantees here. You know, that might, might help in our, and, and while this, there may not be this exact thing, you know, this proposition's regularly tested in, in court as to, you know, whether there's, whether something constitutes a property interest in something that requires extensive due process. And if there is, we don't have to have, it's not like we have to have a major trial every time somebody wants to get kicked out of a lot, or we want, you know, someone's removed from a locker. But I think it has to be sort of thought out and then create, some system created so that there's a fairness there and an opportunity for them to grieve if they have a right to grieve.
The question that often comes up in due process questions is how much process is due? And it's more if you're evicting someone from their home and less if, probably for something like this.
So what if, I, I assume that this has not been, the locker policy's not been reviewed by our lawyer. So.
None of these things, these are all proposals?
Yeah, no, fair enough. So I wonder if a review from the lawyer would come, would generate these kinds of comments or suggestions? I'm not sure it would. Do you think that would be beneficial?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think they can do a little bit, I mean, they can do the research to look, to see if, if this has been challenged and to, to say, I mean, you know, the benefit of having them, as opposed to say, Jack and I, is that, you know, they're professional licensures on the line. We're just, we're just hobbyists, right?
Well, and if it's something that ultimately helps prevent a lawsuit in the future, that would be useful.
Exactly.
So.
So we don't have to try to figure this stuff out.
I, I think if we asked them, if we went to them with, with these particular questions in mind, these concerns, I imagine they would come up with some suggestions.
Go to the city attorney and say, these lawyers on the city council raised all these questions about due process and stuff.
They would let it build in the floodplain and.
Floods, not necessarily.
And the other says absolutely, yeah.
My, oh, sorry, Donna, go ahead.
No, I have a different kind of question. It has to do with, when you did the budget, Ken, you didn't use a number to get there? Like how many lockers you were thinking of, at what cost? Or did you just pick a number?
I'm sorry I keep answering these questions.
Well, you, you did the work on this.
I still have no opinion. But that was benchmarked against some companies who were selling used lockers, which is why we don't have a number. You know, it's, it's really based on what's available on the market at any given time. I cost, I priced out new lockers and they're exorbitantly priced. So used it is, and so it's really based on availability from some of the sources that we found. So I don't know a number. I was just sort of estimating what I saw as averages of costs on websites to buy used lockers.
With the senior center lockers, there were like eight of them, right?
They, yeah, they're, they're not.
Right, which we can't use, but that was a ballpark we were in.
I, I just don't know how you come with a number if you don't decide 10 used lockers, 20.
Well, they all depend on how they, so.
Anyway.
When I was looking for used lockers, there's, there's many variables, how used they are, how big they are. So I, I just tried to use the average price of lockers that I thought would be appropriate.
How many?
Six to eight to 10. I couldn't, I don't know.
That's a fair answer.
Okay.
I, I was thinking you might have a number that you thought we needed. So like, I'd rather not do 10 when we need 25. I'd rather really know what the need is and then go from there. That's all. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, Ken.
No, it's fine.
I was just trying to.
Here to answer questions.
Some number there of, we need this many lockers.
I think, I know Dawn had an opinion on this and I, when we come back, sounds like we'll come back on the bathrooms anyway.
Glenn?
I agree. It would be great to know just how many lockers we would need for the, for the, the demand. At the same time, I think we know we need more than zero. And we have the potential for a relatively small space for them. Basically like right out the door that way, which I don't think would easily fit more than maybe a dozen or so, the way I'm envisioning it at least. So my sense was, again, for, for this initial, like, we just want some, six to eight felt like, six to eight to 10 felt like kind of what we can, what we can tackle with the. At least that's what's been in my head the whole time in the conversation. It has been very vague, but.
And you're looking at a place, and you already have in mind location?
I thought.
I missed that.
Yeah, it was just behind City Hall.
Behind City Hall.
Yes, yeah, between, between City Hall and the police station, basically, within range of the.
I knew it was in this range, I just didn't know of an actual.
The backside of the back wall.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I guess I, I'm not that specific. But I'm thinking like tucked in right alongside City Hall, yes?
Because there's a concrete block over here, so I was thinking if you were going to put it on top of that.
The general idea would be to put it, and like I said, this is all proposal, none of this has been approved or permitted. We'd have to go through that process, is put it right behind the building against the wall underneath where the fire escape is. Because it blocks nothing or no egresses and there's nothing there currently.
Okay. Fair enough. So it sounds like you all are going to come back anyway. And I, I think it would probably, I, I would, I think even with the lockers, it would probably make some sense to come back with some information about that. Does that seem fair?
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Appreciate it, yeah.
And this is all part of the process and, and I think it's, all of this is, you know, great thinking and a good idea, so.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it, yeah.
I'm hoping you feel our support.
No.
Sorry for all the questions.
I mean, I mean, just before, I mean, you mentioned GMT and those, I mean, a lot of people said it's, it's a no-brainer. Why isn't that facility hosting lockers and bathrooms?
I mean, at one time, we talked about lockers for bicyclists so they could bring their bike in, stow stuff, you know, even showers. I mean, there was a lot of, in the vision that didn't happen, so I think we should still revisit that.
Yeah, I mean, if you can't turn the bus around, maybe you could have a locker.
I want to make sure I don't forget to say this. I'm just thinking about that tree that's behind City Hall. Just want to make sure we protect it somehow.
Noted, thank you.
Yep, that's all. Okay. All right, so we're jumping back to item seven. Thank you all, by the way. Thank you for your time and your, your efforts on this. All right, so to the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management appointment, Donna, come on up.
So you do actually have an applicant? It's Donna.
So we did advertise. We had a couple of applicants. They had conflicts of interest because of what they do for a living.
Could you talk a little more clearly?
Oh, sure. So we had a conflict of interest in the couple of applicants. Bill and I had a conversation, given that July 1 of this calendar year, there's a major change in the solid waste regulations. Food scraps have to be diverted. We're actively working with a committee here and that, some of that decision-making on a regional basis will happen in the next few months with the Central Vermont Solid Waste District. I did offer as a staff person to be willing to fill that position until a resident could be found. I have a long history of solid waste management, several different states. Here in Montpelier with the Central Vermont Solid Waste District for 15 years as their executive director. So I'd be happy to be in that position and to help us achieve what we want to achieve in the interim. And as soon as a viable candidate comes forward, I'd be happy to step back and do what I do on a regular daily basis for the city.
But we would, but if it's going to be you, then we need to make a formal appointment.
Yes.
Yeah. So thoughts, discussion, we can also go into executive session if you'd like. Dan?
Just sort of, you know, given your other obligations to the city, is this, I mean, I don't want to have this be something that might break your schedule, being a person who overcommits himself as well, I understand. But I mean, is this something that you, you'll be able to manage?
I think I'd be able to manage it. My understanding is that the CVS WMD board meets once a month. The preparations, I'm usually looking at their agendas anyhow. The other work that I'm doing is on my roster anyhow with the committee. So I think it's a very minor addition to my regular workload. And I'm just, I know a lot of the folks at the Central Vermont Solid Waste District and it's just been a longstanding passion of mine for years. So I, I don't mind fulfilling that role. And I, I don't think it will extend me in a way that interferes with the other work. Thank you, though, for asking.
Lauren?
Thank you for being willing to do that. I mean, obviously, you couldn't really ask for more expertise and be able to jump in. And as the appointee, but I turned out, and this was a lesson learned for a first-year counselor, the meeting time just doesn't work for me, so I've never been able to go. And I was the alternate, so I didn't feel that guilty. I read the materials. But having somebody who could actually, like, we're not being well represented right now, and I'm sorry to say. So having somebody, even if it's interim, until somebody else, or you could assess if it fits within your other many obligations. But I would love to be able to have us well represented there, because I feel very guilty that I turned out. I can't make the meeting times.
Donna?
I would love your application of your expertise. And it really fits in well with this transition into the whole food composting. So I would like to make a motion that we accept Donna Casey to be a representative of the Solid Waste District.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, and on to the rental inspection program. Welcome.
Hi. So Mike Miller, again, Planning Director. So I'm here to talk about. So, I'm here to talk about something Kevin Casey, our community development specialist, had been working on, which was the rental inspection. So, this was one of the tasks, one of the actions that was on last year's list of things that we were supposed to look at, and it was an inventory or survey of rental properties in the city to determine if rental units in the city meet minimum housing standards. And so, this has been kind of a little bit of a challenge. I've, as somebody who worked in Berry City and managed the rental inspection program over there, rental inspection programs are really looking at whether something does or doesn't meet minimum housing standards, not whether it meets a certain level of quality, you know, are people getting a good value for their dollar. It's really about, is it meeting minimum housing standards? Do they have refrigerators and stoves in the kitchen? Do they have GFI outlets in their bathrooms? Do they have smoke detectors? Do they have locks on their doors? So, what Kevin put together and what you have in a memo here looks at, puts together a proposal, because before, this is going to be a labor-intensive process, we wanted to make sure that we've kind of put the process out, this is what we're going to do, we would inventory 30 units, and we would do it in a random sample, and we would then be able to go through and analyze those. And so, we wanted to make sure before we did it that everybody's on board with, this is, this is the inspection sheet we would use, these are the number of things we would be doing. So, if the council does choose to move forward with this, we've got an approved process to move forward. So, Kevin did prepare this. It is rather labor-intensive, it will take away from other activities and duties that he's doing, but it is something, if this was still the council's desire to move forward, here's a proposal that we could do to fulfill what was on last year's strategic plan for this item. And I guess I'll leave it open to questions.
I mean, I'll just kick it off. I'm really interested in this program, I think it has a lot of value, I think a good blueprint for it is laid out in this memo, but we can't be adding like 120 hours to some of our staff here, especially Kevin. Kevin's like a, he's like a bumblebee there, he's everywhere with his hands in so much. So, I think anything worth doing is worth doing right, and I think I would take issue to sort of, you know, just doing it halfway here, and I think, if we're going to do it, let's do it through the budget process, let's have somebody come in and do it, let's add a part-time staffer if we need to, because we're going to have higher staff turnover if we keep burning them out with all these new projects, so, that's just where I'm coming from, right off the bat here.
So, interesting you brought that up, I was wondering if this would be a good project for like a, some kind of an intern or a Vista Americor kind of person.
I don't have any vistas on my.
Right, but I mean, in thinking about next year, if we were to budget for an Americor person that could look into this, what do you think about that possibility? I mean, I know it puts it off a little ways, but.
Yeah, I mean, it puts it off, there is always an oversight, it doesn't always take away, it doesn't always save time to take somebody and teach them how to do something that they don't know how to do, so you spend a lot of time teaching them, which has value to that person, but I don't know if it necessarily takes away that much time, but it's certainly something I talked to Kevin about, he's managed the vistas in the past to see what that would be, but vistas in the past were about $16,000, so if you're looking for a number of what the vistas are, that's been what we budgeted in the past for them.
But that would probably be less than, say, like, a part-time person.
Oh, certainly would be less than a part-time person.
Right. Lauren.
So, totally understand the need to, like, 30 units or whatever we pick that seems reasonable to pull off. I mean, it seems like the, certainly concerning that if permission is denied, like, I get that, but the people who might be most motivated to deny permission might be some of the worst housing, so you're getting a skewed sample, and how do you account for that, which maybe there are ways to, but just would be curious your thoughts on that, and it was also making me think of, you know, is there some way to make this more enticing, and I was thinking about like our energy efficiency goals, could it be like, can we come do an inspection, and we'll do an energy audit while we're there, and leave you with some materials, or is there some way to make this something that's meeting multiple city goals and that people would actually want to participate instead of something that feels punitive, and like you might get in trouble or something if you participate, so people would have an incentive to say no, and if there's no downside, then.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, it's strictly a voluntary survey, I mean, the question that was out was, is there a problem that needs to be solved? So, this wasn't meant to be going out and trying to solve any problems, this is, this is simply, how do we go out and try to determine if a problem exists, and how big of a sample size is that? It, you know, it takes, it takes time to organize these, it is a, as somebody who managed this in Berry City on a, on a larger scale, the contacting landlords, contacting every tenant, giving them 48 hours' notice, scheduling those blocks of time, making sure people are there on time to be able to let you in for a period of time, these, it's not just the time of the inspections, there's a considerable amount of time in preparation, how do you take the paper surveys, convert them into digital surveys, so we can then do some data analysis afterwards, those types of things that we would, we would have to solve, and I think how big a sample size is, you know, and how do we entice to get more people to participate? It still comes down to, I think, the underlying question, which we don't know, which is, the minimum housing survey is really about determining whether we have a lot of units that don't meet minimum housing codes. And our plan with the 30 was, we figured if we surveyed 30 and we got a reasonable sample of 30, and all 30 came back and passed, it's kind of coming back to, the rental housing survey is probably, which is what we think, the opinion of the building inspector, the opinion of Bob Gowans, myself, Kevin, is that we don't have a housing, a minimum housing problem, minimum housing code problem. This is, these are usually looking at much, much more significant issues. What we have is units that are going for $1,100 a month that, you know, are in poor quality and probably are worth $750 a month, and people rightfully upset, but that's a market thing, and it's not, you know, as long as your roof's not leaking and, you know, you've got GFI outlets in your bathrooms, then you're going to meet, you're going to meet the minimum housing codes.
I hear you there, I also have to balance that with stories that my friends have told me about, like, when their landlord didn't fix their broken window for a month, you know what I mean, which would qual, it would show up on something like this, so, and, and other housing authority-type people telling me, you'd be surprised at the things that you find in Montpelier, and so, I mean, I'm just, I'm telling you this because it's, it's hard to sometimes know how to navigate all, like, all of the stories and the experiences.
Yeah, and the other, the other piece to keep in mind is, we can only look at the units that are known, so people who have perhaps an illegal unit, we're not going to be surveying those, because, you know, if somebody has a unit in the basement that doesn't have proper fire egress, that's probably not on any of our lists that even exists. The endpoint, and we have a couple of new faces, just to make sure people remember, when I did these in Berry City, one thing to keep in mind is, the rental inspection program, if we went as far as to do the rental inspection program, the council has to be comfortable with the city evicting people and making them homeless. You know, I do that five times in Berry City. You have to be able to do that, because if, if this unit doesn't meet standards, and if your landlord will not fix that unit, I will be condemning that building, and we will be finding you, we will obviously try to connect that person with as many services as possible, but that is the reality, a possible reality of an endpoint to a, to a minimum housing standard, which is that you actually end up being the person who pulls that trigger and says, I'm sorry, this doesn't meet code, the landlord won't fix it, we are hereby condemning this building, and everybody has to move out, and I had to do that. And it's, it's not fun, I did it in February, I did it to people who were not English speakers, it is not a very enjoyable process, but it is a reality, going down that route, that yes, there's a lot of benefit to doing rental inspections if you have a lot of poor quality, and, and you can work and strong-arm some landlords to fix up some qualities, but for a stubborn landlord, you can also get to a point of doing things that are, in your core just don't sit well, but it's, it is the inevitable endpoint that you have to be prepared, that this could end up on your plate.
Dan.
Mike, how, have we had any sort of comparison with the building inspector, with Chris, vis a vis any of the, you know, he regularly performs inspections of buildings, and it seems like some of his purview is going to overlap with some of these inspection qualities. I mean, is he noticing a deterioration in quality or coming back with reports? Has he weighed in on some of this?
So, there is, there is some overlap between them, so what Chris is responsible for is for building codes and for health codes, which is slightly different than the minimum housing codes, so the, health codes can be violated by tenant issues as well as landlord issues. A landlord may call Chris to investigate for health reasons, because somebody's a hoarder, or somebody's just not taking care of their trash, and you could end up with a tenant, so that can work either way. We do have those issues, we have a number of Washington County mental health units that periodically come back through, because the tenants sometimes have life challenges, and so, but we always work with them and work with Washington County, so we do have some of those that come through, and the building inspection, you know, as violations come up, as Chris finds building code violations, then those are addressed.
But I mean, is he noticing, I mean, has he weighed in on this? Has he noticed any deterioration or, you know, surprisingly high number of building code issues or health code issues on his inspections?
Not, not as much. A number of units over his tenure here have been fixed up, you know, there are a number of good landlords who have purchased properties and fixed up a number of older units and fixed them up, that's not to say that there are a number of units that are deteriorating, but I think, I don't know what the ratio would be between, you know, the bad ones that have been bought and fixed up.
Right. I mean, the reason I'm asking is, you know, we do have the rental housing code in the state that he enforces through the Department of Health, as well as our own building code, and, you know, wouldn't a better effort to sort of get out the word to tenants that this resource is there, if they have an issue with some habitability or some quality, you know, smoke detectors aren't installed, or, you know, the water doesn't always run, you know, or, or even, you know, I mean, I know the housing code even talks about like 65 degrees, that it has to maintain a minimum like three feet from the wall and off the floor, kind of thing. I mean, isn't, isn't that a more effective way, rather than this sort of survey, to sort of actually get out and fix some of these issues? I'm sorry, that's a loaded question.
Yeah, there is, so there's, there is a lot there, and Chris does a lot of these, we will get these calls anyways, so, we will get calls from people, some things we do address, some things we don't, you know, there's certain ones, you know, there's, there's, you know, some mold in the black, in the bathroom or something like that, it's, you know, that, that may, may not fall into the health code, and he does, if somebody calls and says they don't have heat, he's going to go out and take a look at it, it's just, you know, if we get a call, whether it's Bob Gowans, and, you know, sometimes it's related to other issues, but it's just something that, we're going to check up on it, and we'll make a determination if it's something that we deal with. But usually, if people have a question, they can always contact the building inspector, and we can find out about going in.
I think your point is well taken, though, to really work on our communication with the public about what their rights are as tenants.
Yeah, I think the, the issue that has come up with, with Chris, and because you're sitting new to the council, is Chris has been, is, is a fabulous resource and has been tasked with many things, and has been doing a lot of work over the past couple of years, so he's, his workload is overwhelming, so.
Sure. Well, I mean, but that would be a logical place, if he needs, if we need to expand that, to expand his function, you know, because I understand, he takes care of new construction, he takes care of existing construction. I've tried to get ahold of Chris, and I know how difficult a man he can be to reach, but I, you know, it just, it strikes me that this, this may be an issue that we already have a, an effective solution to, and if we can increase, you know, awareness in the community for those kind of things, I don't know where doing a survey is necessarily going to be an efficient or effective use of resources.
And it comes down to the question of whether you want a reactive or a proactive process. The rental inspection, the idea of a rental inspection program is that you're going to be proactive, no tenant has to worry about any retaliations, because there's going to be a random inspection, those inspections are going to come through every five years, so it becomes a proactive inspection and doesn't put it on the, we can use the departmental resource, now whether we have enough resources in that department, we can talk about separately, but certainly, a building inspection would be a place where we could do some reactive, where if, on a complaint basis, we can, which we do anyways, on a complaint basis, go and investigate for any building code or other violations.
Jack.
I started working in tenants' rights work in the early 1970s, and I was one of the people who worked on the committee to develop the proposal in 2004, and I really have always thought that the only way to effectively enforce the housing code is to have a periodic, a universal periodic inspection system, because it, you know, with a backup for, for complaint-driven inspections, because if the, as Mike said, there's a serious concern about retaliation, and landlords do retaliate against tenants for complaining about the condition of their, of their homes. In the, in 2004, I don't remember, I don't have that report anymore, the city may have a copy of Ray O'Connor's report, but I think the proposal, which got pretty far, it got as far as presenting it to the city council, I think it was going to require at least two full-time inspectors to.
It's going to be two and a half staff.
To make the system, system work, and it just got to the point of the council not being willing to devote that amount of money to, to make that kind of inspection program The proposal we have now, you know, is to do a spot check of the quality of housing, of rental housing in the city, to see if the quality, if there's enough inadequate or substandard housing to justify the investment in, in a full inspection program, and obviously, it's not exactly the same as what would be looked at, because this, this is a survey of housing meeting HUD, HQS, Housing Quality Standards, which isn't exactly the same as the requirements of the rental housing health code, although not that different So, the proposal here is, instead of going by the anecdotal evidence that we have from some people that say, sure, the housing quality, housing might not be great quality, but it's not substandard by objective standards, to do a systematic look of a sample of the housing, rental housing in Montpelier, and evaluate whether it appears that there's a significant amount of substandard housing in the, in the city. And if we, if we do this survey and come to a conclusion that conditions are not so bad that we need to have an inspection program, then we can put this question behind us, but it also tells us that we need to. But it also tells us that we need to be, do more tenant outreach and do other things to make sure the tenants know what they can do to get, to secure their rights. But as a, as a means of getting some baseline data on the housing quality of rental housing in Montpelier, I think doing a study like this makes some sense.
Other thoughts? Lauren?
I guess just circling back to the question, like what kind of participation would you anticipate? Do you think there won't be a lot of refusal, so that issue isn't a big deal? Or do you think that might become an issue? And do you feel like, you know, I know N equals 30 is meaningful in statistics, but like, does 30 feel like it would answer the question in a way that we would put it behind us potentially if it came back? Or is it kind of like, yeah, it's just a random snapshot?
We didn't know, we, I mean, it's really hard to know what your sample size should be because you have to know what the, what your coefficient of dispersion is. I mean, you've got to know, you know, where, where is it and how is it clustered? If it's all kind of spread out, then you'll have a pretty, you know, what your rate is. But we'll just have to take, you know, we tried to pick a number that would give enough of a sample, but within a reasonable budget. I mean, you know, if we went and decided we would do 100, we're talking a couple thousand units, rental housing units in the city. So, you know, I think if statistically, we'd probably need to have a lot more to have a statistically significant. But if we did 30 and found 12 that had major problems, then we probably are having more of a problem than we thought. If we do 30 and we end up with six, but they're all relatively minor, easily fixable, you know, they're all good. But this one here should have an electrical outlet and it doesn't, you know, that's not as, but we can put those together. But Kevin did reach out to, because he does have connections to a number of the landlords. And he did reach out to them and said, hey, you know, we're thinking of doing this. Would you be open to it if we contacted you about it? And, and they were all willing to. The major, we've got probably five major landlords that probably are a majority of the units in the city. And for the most part, they were willing to cooperate with the, with the survey. You know, again, they're not going to be, even if we find a violation, we can't enforce the violation. We're just going in and doing a sample and, and doing it. The tenants themselves would also have the right to refuse. So it's not just the landlords. The tenants may go and feel they, they don't want to cooperate as well, so we'll have to see.
Glenn and then Jack?
I think I'm a little concerned about the efficacy of this only because the anecdotal stuff that I've heard is more about illegal units, as you were talking about earlier, that wouldn't even be picked up by this kind of survey. And, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just saying that I'm a little bit torn on whether I think this would be worthwhile or not. It seems like a good idea in general. And, you know, I hear your and the staff's recommendations that it's hard and potentially not useful at this point in this way.
Yeah, if the issue is illegal units, we'd have to think about a different program. How would, how do we root out these illegal units to get them on, up on?
And do you have any guidelines about what that kind of program would be? I know that's a moral question.
That's, I mean, the, the best avenue for that would be to tie it into the reappraisal. Because in a reappraisal, we go in and see every, the insides of every building. It's very difficult for us to get access to the insides of a building unless we're, unless we're invited in. You know, from a zoning standpoint, a zoning administrator can only go in, you know, with either permission or a search warrant. So that's, we have really very little rights to go in, into a building. Building inspectors have a few more rights that, that we don't. But again, their rights are narrow. But when a reassessment comes through and Steve goes through or whoever's working for him, they go through and map the whole thing out and they go and count the number of bedrooms and number of units to do the appraisal. And then, then the only things you're missing are the ones where he had a refusal, which we have cases of those in the city as well, but.
Jack, then Donna?
A couple of point, point, or I guess my main point is that granted, most of the land, big landlords apparently have told Kevin, yeah, we would be happy to do that. In my experience over many years, it's, the smaller landlords are more likely to be terrible landlords than big landlords, at least in terms of failing to maintain their property. That's just the way it is. And when I go over to the State House, or when I used to go over to the State House and lobby, you would hear, hear them talk about how they want to treat the mom and pop landlords well. And the mom and pop landlords, of a large extent, are the problem because they, they're undercapitalized. They think that once they, they get the rent check and pay the mortgage and property taxes, the rest of the money is theirs. And, but, so I don't know. The, I'm a little unclear on what the proposal is since the staff memo says, the staff recommends not moving forward with inspections at this time. Are you, say, are you recommending moving forward with this study or are you recommending doing nothing?
My recommendation would be to, based on the amount of work that it's going to take and obviously take away from other things that staff could be working on, that I'm not sure that it's worth moving forward, but it has been identified. And so if you want to move forward, this is our proposal. So I guess that's a qualified answer of, of, you know, if you were asking me, would we do it? I would say, no, my recommendation would be, I don't think it's warranted based on the information I have. But the counselors and the mayor have heard different anecdotal information from other people. So if you do want to move forward, as we said, we put this proposal forward. If people said, rather than use this inspection form, use a different inspection form, great. We want to hear all of this upfront before we go out and do the work. Because we want to, you know, if, if this, the HUD Section 8 inspection isn't the right metric, then let's put whatever the right metric is. Because if we go out, we want to make sure we're bringing you all back. You know, if we do all this work, we want you guys to be happy with what you're getting as a result.
But it kind of sounds like your bottom line is to say, well, you know, you guys, when you put this on your priority list, it really was not a sensible thing to put on your priority list. And you, in your role as the head of your department would say, maybe the energy of the city would be directed, better directed somewhere else.
Yeah. I think I kind of said that last year when we talked about it.
Oh, you were real clear.
So we're just, as I said, we've, when we're pretty, you know, staff has a lot on their plate. And so we're just trying to, to manage, manage expectations. But, you know, again, if this, if this is a, if this is, continues to be a priority, and it is a priority, then we can fit this into our schedule. And we will fit this into the schedule because you guys are asking us to do it. So that's the answer.
I, based on that, my suggestion would be that we take no action until after our priority setting process and see what people think.
I'm comfortable with that.
Donna, then Lauren?
I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions before you do that, Jack. One is the survey. We didn't really talk about the survey, you talked about the study. I'm really interested in sort of an anonymous survey and how we can encourage people who are shy about interfacing with any other source of information that could possibly do this on the website electronically, whatever. And secondly, we do have an upcoming reappraisal that's going to happen. And that would seem to be the greatest time to dovetail and to really make an effort to seek out people's opinion as well as our reappraisal information. And so I would like to focus.
Well, that would get to Glenn's, Glenn's question, but that wouldn't answer. The appraisal, the assessment won't tackle the minimum housing question. They're kind of two separate questions.
Well, they are, but they'll give you, I think, a general assessment of where there are potentially problems. So it could at least narrow down where you need to, where we need to look. I just think there's values in both of those that would not necessarily mean a full staff because I think we need to staff it right. I totally agree. And this is like the second or third time I've heard you talk about this. Is that we do need the staffing. We need that commitment of staffing to do it right or don't do it. And I was hoping that maybe with the survey and using just the input from the upcoming appraisal to help us know where we should look for the problems, might help us narrow it down to a focused project.
Lauren?
Yeah, I was, I was kind of thinking along a similar lines. I mean, is there an opportunity? I mean, it seems to me like moving forward with this is a lot of work for limited value and even answering the questions we're trying to answer. So it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. I was kind of to Cameron's point and what Dan was bringing up of, you know, if, if there's education and kind of an outreach campaign paired with a survey to gather information to get a sense of, you know, does the community feel like this is a big problem? Are there a lot of people wrestling with this and it's not just a few anecdotes? That's one thing. And then, you know, maybe there's a better way of collating the data from, you know, what's happening on a reactive with the staff that's, that hopefully wouldn't be a lot more work, but give us a better idea of what are you seeing? Have some data behind that to not create new work, but just better kind of summarize, you know, what are you seeing in the places where you are going into buildings and, you know, where Chris is inspecting already?
If I could add, you know, this also might be a nice, nice opportunity to, to start to think about the large number of Airbnbs or short-term rentals that we have in the city that may not be falling under the view, but have the same impacts as, as these long-term rentals. And whether, you know, whether when we start to think about the quality of our housing, if that, if we want to rope that in as well.
Yeah, we don't have any, other than just going and looking on Airbnb, we don't have any program in place right now.
No, but I mean, you know, if we're thinking about, you know, basic housing standards or rental standards. I mean, right now, I don't think that would, we're envisioning, and even your survey and study is envisioning the, the sort of long-term rental, the classic apartment, either multifamily duplex or, you know, accessory apartment. But, you know, to Glenn's point, I bet that we have a lot of sort of overlap between the Airbnb that slowly becomes the illegal apartment because it stops being a short-term rental and becomes a long-term one, even though it may not have all of the features of a traditional apartment. And I think it, anyway, it just goes, it's tagging on to Lauren's point. It's something that for us to think about maybe down the line.
So it sounds like we're in agreement that we're not doing anything right now exactly with possibly, you know, looking at a survey or like seeing how things arise with the future priorities and/or, you know, the common level assessments, appraisals that are coming up. Is that a fair summary? Okay, all right. So is that clear enough for now, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I can go and see what information Chris has, if a summary, if he adds any summaries of his data.
Okay. Jack?
One, one other thing is that the Montpelier Housing Authority does have to do an inspection of every one of its, one of the apartments that are having a Section 8 rental for every year. And I think if you talk to Joanne, especially for the apartments that are new to the, to the program, you get a sense from her of how many of those are, are not meeting HQS. You know, the, the ones that have been on the program year after year, you would think, sure, because they had to pass in order to get approved and every year they have to pass. But some, some, an apartment that hasn't been in the program, they have to get approved. Get a sense of how many of those she finds deficiencies.
Yeah, and a good, a good follow-up to that is, you know, if you are talking with somebody and they are a Section 8, then they already meet. This, this wouldn't help them. Because basically by being a Section 8, you're automatically in a unit that, that already meets these minimum housing standards, so.
It's only about 110 in the city.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Thanks for putting this together, you know, even though you're like, maybe we shouldn't do it. Appreciate it.
Well, we just, like I said, we like to just make sure it's, it's, it's clear that this is, this is what we would do, but.
No, that's fair. Okay, so moving on, I, we've kicked this down the line many times now, so I would like to not kick it this time.
I can be quick. I have a little proposal on this, I think.
Okay.
Because we are moving through the session pretty quick. So originally, I think this conversation started with me pitching that the city hire a lobbyist in the, in the budget discussions. And I will definitely continue doing that next fiscal year, assuming I'm not beat by a write-in candidate on Tuesday. But, you know, there's an expression, you're either at the table or on the menu. I think we're on the menu a lot. And being a capital city, what happens up at the State House disproportionately affects us. So when I, when I look at some of the discussions we're having here, whether it be about like the quality of our rivers, homeless population, I think we're solving a lot of the issues that should be solved up there or at least we should be at the table for them. So for me, like, a lobbyist position, I didn't see it as somebody giving like a Cicero-like-esque testimony in front of legislative committees. I saw it more as an information tracker. And I think maybe as a bit of a pilot, you know, I, I think the legislative agenda looks pretty good. But, you know, it's, it's kind of narrow because a lot of what you do up there is play defense rather than offense. And you want to know what's coming at you. You've got a $5 billion budget. You want to know if there's an opportunity that pops up that you can hop into it. So as a start, my suggestion would be, Town Meeting Week is next week. They've all gone home. I would ask if somebody else on council wants to volunteer with me. And hey, it could be Glenn, you're stepping down. To come up for a plan for the rest of the session where we get information out to people who need to know in city government. And talking about, okay, you know, the state of Vermont hires a diversity director. There's going to be a big hearing in Room 10 up there. Wouldn't it be nice if the social and economic justice had a heads up in case they wanted to send a member up there? You know, again, hearing on the PFAS or something, we know about it. We should have somebody in the room. Tiff comes up, bam. So just coming up with a process, we're volunteer-driven because I don't want to put more on staff. We identify all the relevant committees and all the hearings coming up for the week. And we have a distribution list to get that out. And I think I would be satisfied if even we had a little bit more engagement just based on doing that for the rest of the legislative session. So that's a proposal I'm throwing out there and I'd love a volunteer, if that's sort of the will of the council here.
Lauren?
I'm, I'm happy to volunteer. I, as, as someone who also, I mean, I'm, I'm making a weekly legislative schedule anyway for the issues I track. So adding on additional priorities, some of which are the same, but looking for, for other things. I'm happy to, to help or play that role. And you can, we can, happy to work offline on how that might look and what we can do to position the city as well as possible in these conversations.
Sounds good to me.
Again, I'm just throwing out an idea, so if anybody, it's a lousy one.
Well, I, I think, actually, I think this is a very strong and overdue idea to have someone up there or having us engage in these conversations because I think it's absolutely correct. You know, you either participate, find these opportunities because no one, no one says, hey, let's stop this legislative committee process, call up the Montpelier people, see if they want to come and get some of this money. It's already done by the time they're talking about it. And so I think that makes a lot of sense. So I support it. I mean, I, if Lauren hadn't jumped in, I would have, so.
Oh, you could do it too.
But Lauren already jumped in, so. But I'm willing to help too. I'll just, I'll throw it out there. But I think it makes a ton of sense and it's long overdue. And to the extent we can do it through the rest of the session, but I would make this a priority for next year if I'm not defeated by a write-in candidate.
I'm going to write a contract next year with a lobbyist. They have to pay for their own position by raising enough money for the city budget, assuming they do.
I think that's a great idea. I actually have a comment on the content.
Me too. Thank you.
Donna, why don't you go ahead?
Well, no, I just wanted, and I keep thinking I've said it, but I'm afraid I haven't, is to add an aspect for public safety, particularly regional public safety. And there's a new commissioner now for the state's public safety department who is really supporting regional dispatch systems. And as you, some of you may not know, some of the towns in Vermont get free dispatching by the state, but they are trying to get rid of that. The towns who have it have very strong lobbyists and legislators and keep it. So the new commissioner is really more outwardly stating that he really wants to see a level playing field and that nobody gets free dispatching and that everybody has to become part of some regional system. So I think public safety should definitely be here. And the, and the other piece of that is a real important one is that we have this fight now with AT&amp;T and their proprietoriness and Verizon. And our state has chosen its cellular system, AT&amp;T, for emergency assistance, but they want to shut out Verizon. Massachusetts has made a law and all their bids, they have to share. And I would like to see our state do the same thing, saying you cannot make this a proprietary so that if someone's on Verizon or AT&amp;T, they get access to all the buildup that's happening in the state.
Do you have any specific, so that feels like two separate items?
Yeah, they're both under public safety, so if we just had even just a little line of public safety.
Do you have any suggestion for wording on that?
I do not, other than, I guess, public safety focus on regional public safety funding and support by the state and that we look at cellular coverage.
Is that specific enough, team?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was, thank you for bringing that up. Make sure we were clear on that. So my question is actually, so under the, that second green section there, 2020 City of Montpelier Legislative Agenda, number seven, Support Resolution of Rail Siding Down Berry Street Through the Savins Pasture Property. I actually thought that we were, would have been against that.
Yes.
Which is to say that, because the rail right now would like to have, to relocate the line through Savins Pasture.
That was just a misunderstanding on my part of what, so no worries.
I think, okay, no, fair enough. I, I, any, especially as, you know, we're looking to maybe ever have some development there and we have this shared use path along, along Savins Pasture now, and then to put a rail right next to it, I think would probably be not so great. But if there's anybody who, you know, is in favor of the language as stated, I just wanted to check before we change that. No, okay, great. Cool. Just wanted to make sure that was, we're all on board with that.
Thanks for catching that.
And to also, I just want to note, well, actually, any, anything else on this? Lauren?
Just, so, I mean, I guess just trying to figure out the balance between principles and then specificity, both so that we know what we're talking about and to make it easier to actually track. So a lot of this is in the budget, so that is what it is. Some of it, you know, like, number six, advocating for global warming solutions. So obviously there's like a few bills that are actually moving. Could or should we be more specific? You know, bills that meet certain principles such as the Global Warming Solutions Act, which is a specific bill that if that passed, I think it would help us meet our own net zero goals. And so that's one question, I guess, is, you know, I mean, it's always like, the vehicles can change and stuff, so you don't want to lock yourself in. So I think we could write it with enough caveats of what we're trying to get across, but it also would make it easier and more meaningful to advocate for specific pieces of legislation and/or like even the, you know, additional human services funding for homeless services. Like if we know what kind of buckets of money those actually are that we can track and be watching, I think the more specific we could get, the more effective we would be at actually being able to do that in a way that would be meaningful.
So I think this is.
That you're going to give us.
Yeah, right. Well, so I, I, so, thank you for bringing that up. I, one of the fears I had in terms of having this legislative agenda on the, on our agenda is that there are a couple of pitfalls that I think would be easy to fall into. Like one would be that we, that we each bring our own, like, super, like, hyper-specific, like, this is, you know, something that we really need to see. And it's not necessarily particular to, just like, where it's not generalized to like the interest of Montpelier. But knowing that these are things that, that fall within, that on principle, that they fall within the general goals of the city, you know, that's, that's sort of what has crafted the things here. But I, I think as long as it, as long as a bill, I'm just going to say this out loud and you can disagree with me, but as long as, if a specific bill, you know, does some of the things that are laid out here, you know, like, you know, support opportunities that promote ecological protection, that, that then qualifies, I imagine. And that, I mean, if there is a specific thing, maybe we can just bring it back to touch base, you know, that's something that you're going to circulate to us.
It could be that we leave it this big for this and then we can try to work on, here are bills that we think meet these principles that we, so that might be a way to kind of split the difference. It's, a lot of different bills could fit these general goals. So we will probably just need to prioritize which ones seem the most meaningful and where we would want to try to make a difference for the city.
Right. Right, yeah. So, because any of these things could be political minefields or time sucks. And so, and just, you know, want to be conscious of that. But yeah, I think it would be valuable to, to know what those things are, especially like as, as any of us end up having conversations with our legislators, that we can have, that we can be, you know, specific in saying, but have the backing of like, no, we know that this fits the, the council's priorities.
Just two other brief thoughts. When we could add something about, just to the conversation we were having earlier, there are a couple of pieces of legislation related to PFAS that are moving that do reduce the use of PFAS or restrict the use of PFAS in certain products. So kind of getting to what the Department of Environmental Conservation folks were saying. So we could say policies that reduce PFAS that create problems for the city or something. I'd be happy to work with Cameron on some language in that if people are amenable.
No, I'm convinced it's not a problem.
It's going great. It's going great for all of us.
Are you seeing that as a separate item, like a ten?
I mean, it could.
Or is that underneath ecological protection?
We could wrap a phrase into six if we wanted to.
Either way.
Either way. And then my last thing, we have a lot of VLCT on here. And I, I generally don't, for me personally, I don't find that VLCT represents my values a lot at the State House. And so I don't really love deferring to them. They are often opposed to a lot of the priorities we have listed. And so putting a lot of, as if they are representing our city values, their lobbying, I don't think is accurate. And so putting this much language that kind of implies that VLCT is stand, you know, that we're, we're using the values that VLCT is bringing to the State House, they could like literally be lobbying against bills that we would be supporting. And I think that could happen often. And so just, just how we word that.
I'm not, this was just all a proposal that came out of these conversations for you guys to consider.
It's a nice place to go.
Yeah, there's, there's no, no one is wed to this.
Donna and Dan. There are three specific things that are listed here I think we do support. I mean, one is our local option tax that we have, and we want to continue that support. The second one doesn't say it. To me, that's the Tiff. And the whole thing with Act 250 goes into the third one. And likewise, the, the first one. I think those are, all three of those clear statements I support. I think the city supports.
So maybe we could move those onto our own agenda and not reference them as VLCT priorities, but more Montpelier city priorities.
Yep, I'm with you. I'm with you.
Dan?
I don't, you know, it may make more sense once, one, you know, it always seems on these legislative agendas, we can talk about these different policies and we can't wordsmith too, too precisely because it's often driven in, in part by what's, what's going on and what's, what's really important, you know? So for example, you know, they're always talking government ops about changing how city charters are adopted, which we always have an interest in, you know, because we have a city charter, we amend it from time to time. And if it involved less legislative oversight, that might not be a terrible thing and more flexibility and power to the municipality. But is that necessarily our fight as a city? Well, that's, I think, something we can, we can talk about and discuss. I see a lobbying effort ultimately to be about things that will directly benefit the city. You know, so we talk about financial resources or projects, you know, support from the state given their footprint. Or, you know, we can talk about these bills where we can weigh in on social justice or environmental, you know, PFAS ordinances where we may have a particularized interest. But I think, at least at first, if we can keep it broad, then we can start to look bill by bill. And, and like any board, you know, that may involve it coming back here and having a brief discussion. Hey, there's H80 that's going to talk about PFAS. Should we, should we take a position? Yes, or no, or maybe. You know, but I think that can be more, as opposed to drawing up a, a constitution of legislative priorities. I, I think we'll just get bogged down into some of the, some of the weeds here that may or may not even be, come up as, as real issues this time. So my, my suggestion would be that, you know, we can generally work with this, but if Connor and Lauren are going to start to monitor, that's where we start. And then based on that experience, then that will inform how we actually draft these legislative priorities.
Jack?
It's not necessarily a thing for this year, given that we're halfway through the session. But at Legal Aid, we have this process of people who, we've developed a form for people who want to advocate for doing a certain bill, to fill out this form, say, well, here's what, what it would do, and here's why I think we should do it, and some other information like that. And we might want to consider doing something like that next year and getting started in the fall so that we're prepared when they start up in January.
I agree. Just a mental note for us all collectively, if, so when we send out the budget survey, say, what do you want to see or not see in the budget, that might also be a good time to be, to like, let's, let's like wrap those things together so that they both, you know, trigger at the same time. Donna?
Are we doing a council retreat?
We will be, yes. Yep. With strategic planning as part of that. So we've talked about a few changes to this document, but thoughts? Are we ready to have a motion? What do you want to do? Further thoughts?
I move we adopt it as, as it's been amended tonight.
Second.
Should we just clarify what those changes are?
Yeah, I did want to hear if you had any feedback about the last section, which we, I went to our department heads and asked them what specific bills were important to them. So that was for y'all's perusal, if you will. So I didn't know if you wanted to include those or take them out.
I'm sorry, the one, the agenda is different than the one we had previously?
No. Well, no, I added a few sentences based on our last conversation about it. But I'm talking about the last page. It's called the Department Level Specific Legislation Monitoring. So this is what our department heads are, are currently watching right now.
I, I don't have a problem including that because all we're proposing to do around this time is basically send out an email so that if, for example, if the H560 about burial fee for vandalism fund comes up, shoot an email over to, you know, the Cemetery Commission.
Okay.
Just, so just to recap, we are reversing the position on seven. We're adding nine regarding public safety. And what did we, what do you, what would you like to do about? Do you want to like take the three bullets from VLCT and just add them to our list or leave it as listed presently?
I think that makes sense. And then just, we'll eliminate the city cities and towns section, take the three bullet points, move it to ours. I think that makes it a bit cleaner.
And then leave the rest? And so people who moved and seconded, that's okay? This is my unit. Okay. Further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks Connor for bringing this up, really.
Oh, no, no, thanks, sir.
I'm volunteering.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So that is the end of our regular business. So council reports. Donna, are you good to start?
I just encourage everybody to show up at town meeting next Tuesday and vote. And I'm on the ballot twice. One's at City Council for District One and for at-large Public, Central Vermont Public Safety Authority. Thanks you for your support.
Actually, thank Tom Brown and the folks on the bridge. That was a great town meeting day spread that they do there. So I think it's a great service to keep everybody in town informed there. And best of luck to the candidates. One other thing I just want to flag, I read that the Seattle City Council, I don't mean to be too provocative, but banned winter evictions from December 1st to March 1st at a meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I was hoping to reach out and just get a little more information about that because, you know, as we talk about these sort of heartbreaking matters as we did today, it, yeah, no, it seems ungodly that somebody be in the cold here in our community. It's colder than Seattle even. So I'll bring some information back to the council on that. Thanks.
I want to report briefly on a couple of meetings that I've just been at this week. Homelessness Task Force this morning was a really productive meeting. We met with Mary Ellen Mendel of 211 and got kind of a rundown of the state of affairs there that taught me an enormous amount, what someone might experience if they are in need of emergency housing after hours, what happens when they call, who they get, how long they have to wait, and all of the, the problems and potential solutions to that. And on that note, I want to encourage council to get another member, now that I am stepping down, to attend those meetings. It is currently Wednesdays, 11:30 to 1:00. And it's always a great meeting. And I think it would be great for the council to continue to have a close connection to the Homelessness Task Force because they're doing good work. I also went to Another Way on Monday. I've been visiting them about once a month. And I think that is not a formal council connection. It's just something that they asked me to show up because I was doing the Baguio's morning thing. And I found that it is a, I've said this before, I think many times, but it's a really good connection to have. Another Way really is a community center and it's a place where not only do I learn an enormous amount of useful information about how people are experiencing the city, but also I'm able to share a lot of what goes on here so that they, the, the community there knows what's happening with the bike path or with the transit center, at least as much as I do, which is sometimes not that much, but, but it's good. And I would love to see a continued connection between the council and Another Way as well on a volunteer basis. But if, if anyone is interested or willing to do that, I think it would be a really great service. I also want to go back briefly to earlier in this meeting and thank the council for considering the homelessness task force ask even outside the regular budget process. I know that's not how, and Task Force clearly knows. I know that's not how, and Task Force clearly knows that's not how it is usually done, and I think it's a testament to this council's goodwill and sensibility that we're, we're considering it as an emergency sort of thing, whether or not it goes forward. And finally, this is my last meeting, so thank you all for giving me a place to hang out on Wednesday nights for the last couple of years. It's been great, it's been an honor and a great education to, to serve here, and I want to thank the staff and the council and the residents who've supported me and taught me tons of stuff and been patient with me, so it's been a pleasure sometimes.
Well, I want to first of all thank Glenn for his service and for his term, and sorry that we only had a few meetings together. But other than that, I would echo the other councillors' call for, you know, the town meeting day to come and vote, and thank the Bridge for their extensive coverage of the races, and thank you all for this small interim position that's coming quickly to an end.
The only thing I have to say is to thank Glenn for the time here. He's, obviously, he spent a lot of time beyond what is necessarily required to do the job and threw himself into it wholeheartedly, and I've enjoyed having him on the council with me.
So I just wanted to update everyone quickly on Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee. We do have a request for proposals out. We've gotten some questions, so hopefully that indicates that we'll get some applications. It's very late, so not to talk about it now, but I did want to get it on your radar. There has been a question raised of when we had approved the $10,000. Originally, it had been to look for it in the fiscal year '20 budget, and then we put $10,000 in the fiscal year '21 budget, that hopefully on Town Meeting Day, everyone will approve. So is there two $10,000 pots of money or just one? And so we looked back at the records and it was not clear, and so as we're, as we work with potential folks, then we wanted clarity so we can make sure that any, and maybe Cameron can explain this better than me, or provide any clarification, but we certainly want to be crystal clear with any potential consultant of what they might expect.
I do, I do want to expand on that just a bit, I'm sorry. Just, we do know that the money starts in fiscal year '21, all of the consultants have been told that, that's in their, that's in the RFP. My question is, if we, like, do we, does it continue? So is it 10K cutoff, and the next year, is it 10K cutoff? Or is it, we didn't spend all of the 10K, does it accumulate? So that was not clear when y'all voted, so I just want to see what the actual intent was.
Donna, do you have a comment on that?
Well, I thought that what Lauren asked was different than what you're asking.
Those were two different questions.
I was going back, one first to Lauren. I made the motion, and the mayor let it be known that she didn't like us to make a motion about money ahead of budget, but I was committed to make sure it got in the budget, but it was all about being in the budget for FY '21. So it's part of the budget, even though we did the first vote before we were considering the other budget. And likewise, to me, we've never decided ahead whether somebody, that I remember, carries over. We've never done that. Within departments, departments have it, but not for specific items. So I wouldn't assume it's carried over.
I, I agree with your assessment of the FY '21, and then also, you know, thinking about how it works with other committees. For example, the Energy Committee gets $5,000 a year, but it's, but that's, but it doesn't accumulate, it goes away. So I assume it would be as it is with other committees.
Thank you for the clarity. That will be very helpful for the clarity, and I think is what we expected, but we just wanted to be crystal clear, because, so, that's, that is it, and thank you, Glenn. It's been a real pleasure, and I really appreciate your thoughtful and heartfelt approach, and you will be missed.
That is just what I was going to say. Glenn is just so thoughtful and clearly has a really big heart, and it's, it's really been wonderful to serve with you. And I guess I would just add, too, it's also been admirable, your commitment to Baguette's Thursday mornings. Are you going to keep doing that?
Right, I forgot to say, I'm going to be there tomorrow. After that, no. I have, I have other plans to be regularly in public, but it will not be in that way. I think I'd like to do some volunteer portrait sessions or something like that. But anyway, tomorrow will be my last open ears at Baguette's, 8:30 and 9:30.
Well, good on you for doing it. It's very admirable and inspiring, even. So, thank you. And that's it for me.
Oh, I would just say, thanks, Glenn. It's been a pleasure. I'm sorry I hogged the outlet so much over the last couple of years. This one has a better battery, so I don't have to plug it in anymore. I just mentioned that early voting has been very, very light. Not sure what that means, we'll see, but we do have early voting hours on Saturday. The office will be open from 10 to 2:00.
Oh, Donna? Just that we forgot to thank ORCA.
Oh, yes.
Who also did a lot for all the candidates and for us non-candidate people having a time to share city business and our gold. So I really thank them, they're here every meeting, but the additional interviews with Richard Shear was really helpful.
Yes, thank you for remembering that.
Okay, so first off, thank you, guys, it's been fun. Appreciate being up here with y'all. I do want to let you know that tomorrow I will be speaking at the State House regarding support of State Bill 216 about getting us on the exchange, so that'll be at 2:30, if you want to join me. I would really appreciate that.
2:30 tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will send you the information. I also want to publicly draw attention to the fact that you did get a report from the Montpelier or the MDC, so if you have any questions, please respond to that, we'll get, we'll make sure that those are communicated. And like the mayor said, we have started talking about strategic planning. If you haven't been told, instead of contracting that out this year, I will be taking on that responsibility. So I have a great new format that I'm excited to roll out, so I will be sending an email, letting you guys know what that might could look like shortly. And I do want to thank Glenn, it's been really great getting to know you and working with you here and on the task force, so I do appreciate you. That's all I have.
Great. Okay, so without objection, we'll consider the meeting adjourned.